This is our public work session, and I want to thank our team from Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing and Mr. Chairman for being here. But before I do that, we need to take care of some business. So, Madam Clerk, would you call the row, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Brother.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here.
And Mayor, I need to call my row also.
You will, sir. So, would you like to do that now?
Ms. Wick.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Pickens.
Here.
Vice Chair Diggs.
Here.
And Chairman.
Here.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. Mayor, thank you very much. Councilman, Councilwoman, thank you very much for having us here. We're excited to be in the room with you. And I'm going to take the next hour and 45 minutes to just really brag about exciting things that are happening at PRHA. And also to give you, kind of give you a peek under the tent.
Don't taunt him. He'll do it.
Probably give you a peek under the tent of some of the things that we've got on our plate. Some of them, you know, they're not formalized. A lot of it is this discussion that we're having. But we're just, we're just happy to be here. But I gave you just, we just gave you an informal sheet here. And again, if it's all right with you, I'd like to try and be as informal as possible. But first, I'd like to introduce some of the, some of the team here besides the Commissioners here. And thank you very much. I think we've got a great team of Commissioners, and the appointments that you've made have been absolutely fantastic. As you know, we have, we do have an opening now, so we're looking forward to that being filled. But while we have the oversight for the financials and the hiring of the Executive Director, it's the work that's being done by the staff. And I'm going to introduce some of them individually and talk about, some of the things I'm going to talk about, but what we've done. But of course, you've met, you know Ed, and we've got Alyssa Winston in the back, who's our Deputy, Deputy Executive Director. Karen James, who keeps us out of hot waters, our counsel, our legal, legal team. Kinte Debo is in the back there. He's our newest addition to the team. He's our Chief Financial Officer. And he, I call him, you know, probably one of the most powerful men we have since he's got to keep, keep the, keep the books for us. But we have assets that he has to track of almost $100 million. And last year, with our audit statement, we had almost $28 million in revenue. So, that's a tremendous organization that we're having to keep track of. So, he's been with us for about two months, two and a half months, coming to us from the offices in DC. So, he brings a tremendous amount of experience for, for us. But next to him is Mr. Philip Page. Philip is our marketing and development person. He was most recently the President of the Virginia Community Development and Housing Organization, which is one of the more advocacy housing organizations here in Portsmouth. And he held that, held that office during the pandemic. But we're going to talk a lot more detail about some of the stuff that Philip is doing. But during, during COVID, I want to say his, his, one of the remarkable things he did was he, he was able to sell off about $1.1 million worth of Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority property that we turned the money back into the city. So, the last three, two and a half years, he's worked very hard to get the, kind of that, that property that we've been sitting on. And it's, we've had 155,000 so far this year. So, I would expect with the way rate he's going, probably going to be another 150,000 coming back to the city. So, 1.1 million altogether. Also, also, he was able to help with those properties. I want to say the two biggest ones in my mind, and maybe the Commissioners will, will pipe in when they, when we go around the table. But the two biggest ones was the, we turned over the Holiday Inn Garage back to the city for that development that was going to happen. And the last one was the property that was next to Seaboard across from Kroger, where the old Jeffrey Wilson was. So, that we, the EDA had come to talk to us and wanted to support that developer to put another car wash, I guess, that we needed in the city of Portsmouth. So, we turned that property over. So, Philip, Philip is really the driving force for a lot of that disposal of the properties. I've got Carol Thomas, who's sitting back there. Carol, Carol is very important to us that she handles the, she handles the Housing Choice Voucher Program for us, Section 8, that you would call it. We have roughly 1,900 families here in the city of Portsmouth that are under Housing Choice vouchers. Carol, Carol, and that represents a 10% increase over the last, last two years. So, even during COVID, she was able, her relationships with HUD and Virginia HUD, she was very, very good at negotiating with those folks, saying, hey, we need to take care of our folks. We need to make sure that we can find housing for them. So, Carol was the one who led that. She was also, with the COVID money, able to get us veteran vouchers for those veterans. And as you know, Portsmouth is one of the few cities that has zero homeless for veterans. Well, that's, part of that is Carol's responsibility. And she was able to acquire extra vouchers to the point where other cities came to us to use our vouchers. So, that is, that is a big thing when we can collaborate regionally when it comes to Housing Choice vouchers. The last one, I think Val, Val here? Val Jenkins is not here? I know we had a Move to Work program going on. But Val Jenkins, who handles our public housing, we have a little over 1,200 public housing units, all right? And Val Jenkins is, is, was the one who is personally responsible for what's going on, public housing. And the one that you saw that's most visible right now is Lexington Place that we put in about a year and a half ago. We've had another 72 units going there. So, I just wanted to, I don't know if I missed anybody else from the staff, but again, this is a tremendous team that we have. And as far as giving us advice and confidence of what the, what the organization's doing, we're very, very pleased with the, with the team that we have. I want to talk about some of the successes very quickly that we've had in the last couple of years. The first one is Move to Work. We had the Region 3 Administrator for all of HUD to come here about, about two days ago to visit us, Mr. Matthew Heckles. He's out of, out of DC. He represents Virginia, Maryland, Delaware, West Virginia, and Pennsylvania. Came here specifically to visit one of our housing units and to also thank us for our involvement in the Move to Work program. If, it's, it's, we've had some press on it. We're undergoing training right now. It's going to be a program that's going to envelop Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority and take us in a different direction. We were one of 10 agencies in the United States that was chosen. I think that's a fantastic effort. And hats off to the staff. And it's only done when you can have the financials and the housing support that we have. But one of 10 organizations that were named, housing organizations were named that. And it will allow us to change the rules as it comes to how people get vouchers, how to people, and help people more towards homeownership, which is what we would like to go to, especially here in the city of Portsmouth, right? So, it's, it's our number one program, and it's going to change the way we do business. We, I've already talked about the returned property and funds. I've already talked a little bit about Lexington Place. We've got another 72 more units going in. The land has been, has been, you know, demolished, all the stuff's demolished. You just see a lot of green spaces out there. Our, what we've gotten is prob, we're hoping to break ground sometime late this year, early next year, to start putting that property in. Those are some fantastic housing, housing units out there. Holly Point, as you saw there on Effingham, that's, it looks like we're coming close to finishing that. That's going to be the workforce, workforce housing. So, something, again, visible here in the city of Portsmouth. We close tomorrow on 340 High Street, the old famous building, Todd Worth Community College Building. There were some title issues that we had to work our way through. But we're very excited to have a local, local group having bought that property and to be able to develop that property and put, again, housing into that property on 340 High Street. The Home Repair Program, and Ms. City Manager and Counsel, thank you very much for your, for your trust in us to manage the Home Repair Program. This was the first time we've ever done this program. Y'all allocated $150,000 to us to provide repairs to citizens here, senior citizens here in the city of Portsmouth who are low income. We had probably six, seven applications for every one that we could, we could give out. So, I know we've been working with the City Manager, our Executive Director, Ed Blain, has been working with the City Manager, see, is there more home funds or CDBG funds that could be moved there? Particularly when we know that we've turned back 1.1 million, can we kind of work with HUD, maybe get part of that carved back to send to us? Because it is, it is a great way to get houses repaired for the senior citizens that we have in the city. And I'll be talking more about senior citizens here in a second. Mount Harmon, Mount Herman, I'm not as quite as familiar as, as, that, in this particular area. But Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority has, has the ability to underwrite or guarantee certain housing projects and loans that are being done in the, in the city. And Mount Herman came to us and asked us if we would guarantee or help facilitate a $10 million bond effort that they have so they could do some renovations in Mount Herman. I guess they have some sort of community group in Mount Herman that does this kind of stuff. So, we were, the answer was yes. And so, it was nice that we could use our good faith to help out Mount Herman. I've talked about the, the financials. We've had clean audits. We've had clean audits for the last, last five years. I've been on the board five years. We've had cleanup for five years. We've just changed auditors again because we want a deeper dive look. But as I said, we, and then this past year, we were named a high performing housing authority, which is the highest rating that you can get of any housing authority. So, in the bottom line there, financials look good. We've got housing that's being developed. We've got a great team, and we're anxious to move forward. On the family support services, not only are we in the housing business, but we want, we want to care about the quality of life of the folks that are housing. We have Dolores, Dolores Adams, who's not here, who's also our contracting officer, I think leads a fantastic year-round daytime, nighttime programs to reach as many folks as we can. We're limited by the brick and mortar that we have. But we have, we have, we've been given awards of excellence. Ms. Coster, right over here, ma'am. All right. For the last three years, we've been awarded awards of excellence from the National Regional Association of Houseings for our program with youth, our after-school programs with youth, and also our financial management program. So, those are the two key programs that we do with the youth out there at, at the Hope Village site. COVID, again, knocked us down. Okay? We, we know that. But we were very, very instrumental. We have, working with the Health Department out at Swanson, and also all our housing developments, to make sure we got onsite COVID testing and providing as much medical assistance as we can to the folks and for COVID support. And I appreciate, we've had a lot of light shined on the crime and the, the problems that we're having in housing. I think the, the gains that have been made in the last four or five months have been phenomenal. We have invested quite a bit of money in security with, working with the city on the cameras that we will have in probably most of our facilities by the end of the year. Swanson, Dale, Hamilton, Seaboard were the first ones that we rolled out. To, because of the shortages with the police force and working with Chief Prince and his officers, we also brought on board five part-time security people ourselves. And we worked with the courts to get them to be designated as conservatives of the peace, so they had some authority there. But we had, we had a little, we had a big speed bump there about six, eight months ago. And I'm not going to say it's quiet, all right? But I'm saying it seems like we've got our arms around the issue. And I appreciate, again, some of the initiatives I know the city has done, because all we are is just a microcosm. The public housing is just a microcosm of the rest of the problems the city's having. And we're all worked together on it. Okay? All right, sir. Let me move on to our future. And we're excited. We are leaning forward here at Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority. We're required to submit a five-year plan every year to HUD. But we focus on the newest year to see if there's any changes that we need to be made. About two years ago, we kind of took a step back and said, okay, let's, and I asked, asked for some thoughts too. Portsmouth is older city, proud city, a lot of good resources here. And I felt, hey, while, while we are in the housing business, let's see if we can focus outside of the public housing towards senior housing. All right? It may count, sound kind of weird, but having been in the housing business for a while, the houses that we have, in my opinion, the housing stock that we have in Portsmouth that seniors live in is about $125,000 to $150,000. A lot of older houses and a lot of older neighborhoods. Okay? We have not only the city involved, we've got the school board involved. But we have been approached, they, they put a number of 87 million on it, all right? I think that's fantastic. But again, we will absolutely need your guidance on what, where we want to go, go with that. So, we're very excited about the vision that we have for senior housing. We're, and again, this is, we're trying to build that war chest. We're trying to make sure that we're cooperating with the, with the properties that we have to make sure the city's back. So, it puts us in a position that if we can, if we can move. All right. Victory Crossing. We own two pieces of property at Victory Crossing. One, one right next to Lowe's, all right? Victory Crossing is an unusual relationship that Lowe's is part of a, part of that group. The, the people that own the strip shopping center are part of an ownership group. And I guess where the, where the Ruby Twosies was, they're part of an ownership group, and then us. So, anything that we do there, before we can even bring it to y'all, has to head their head now. There was some talk about us trying to put a motel there, hotel there. It did not fly with them. Did not fly with them at all. They want some sort of retail put there. So, we're working with, with that group to see what kind of, we're working with EDA and that group to see what kind of retail we can put there. Now, however, behind Farm Fresh, where Farm Fresh is at, we own a plot of land there. We would like to put, what I call, I call it a bus driver's, bus driver's type of motel. So, if folks want to go to the casino, they've got something they can go to that's maybe, you know, not, a little bit more affordable for them. Right? So, I just want to let you, just, we're talking, we're talking. And again, we'll need your guidance about a motel, that property behind, that property behind Farm Fresh. All right? We've, we're working with the, with the City Manager. We have the agreement that Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority has with the city was done in 1956. All right? So, the rules of engagement of how we're supposed to operate is dictated by an agreement that was done back then. There's a lot of changes that we need. And there's a lot of help that we need that wasn't available in 1956. You know, whether it was trash pickup, trash pickup, broadband support, police support, fire support. I guess it was, it wasn't a boilerplate. It was a very well thought out agreement. It's a very long agreement. But we're asking for some consideration from the city to help us out, all right? As we try to, as we try to provide housing to seniors, and those who are low income and need affordable housing here in the city of Portsmouth. What, what incentives can we put there? What incentives can we give you? What things would you like us to do? All right? Since supposedly Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority is a semi-quasi-government entity, all right? Y'all put us on the board. All right? We're all Portsmouth residents, and we want to do what, what, what your vision is and what, what we need to do to make sure we're satisfying that. Swanson, we're tearing down. We're about 35, 40% not occupied, all right, out there. We, we're, we're trying to do everything we can to make sure those, that there's no loss in quality of services to any of those folks out there at Swanson. Right? We've, we have guaranteed them that if there's public housing available, they can move to that. We've also received some from HUD, from tenant, tenant protection vouchers. So, they will be made whole in any decision that they, that they make. We're also on the hook to pay for any moving expenses that they had. So, there'll be, what we're hoping, and that's everything that we can. So, these are Portsmouth residents who've been there a long time. That there's any expense, we'll take care of those expenses for them. We have no plans for the property at Swanson. So, just something to think about. As you well know, it, it has become a problem for us as far as flooding goes. Ever since they put the Martin Luther King Expressway in, they closed off that, that entrance way. Every time it rains, we cross our fingers. And regretfully, you know, we'd like the tenants to move out quickly, but we are not, we are not pushing them to move out. We, we have a timeline of the end of year, first, first of next year, to hopefully have it vacated. But I don't know if y'all know, but last week, we started having our problems. Couple, couple people got into one of the vacant ones and set it afire. And we're very, very lucky because that it was an occupied, it's an occupied building. And so, we're, we're, we're trying to move as best as we can. And I think the Swanson folks are doing a great job helping us keep it clean out there. The last one, and we've talked to the City Manager about it. We want to do the best we can to protect our tenants, protect, protect our folks that are living at Lexington Place and, and Dale Homes. We, you know, our, our, since we do have a vision for senior housing, and we do have a vision to put more housing out there, we have made a commitment to buy the land around Lexington Place. All right? We made a bid on the, that one junkyard in the corner. We lost that bid. We have a bid now into the place that's the quasi-mechanic, you know, automobile repair, used to be a funeral home out there. We have made a bid for that property. But we'd like to, we'd like to create a buffer around Lexington Place and Dale Homes and have been working with the City Manager and EDA to say, okay, and it's not going to be tomorrow. And it's not going to be five years from now. It's probably going to take us a good 10, 15 years from now. But we want to put that mark on the wall and see what we can do to help develop that whole, that whole property out there to make it even more attractive for the tenants out there. Again, we've got 72 new tenants at Lexington Place. We're going to add 72 more. We have had no discussions about Dale Homes. You know, we just renovated Dale Homes about three years ago. So, there'll be no discussions really about where we're going with, with Dale Homes. But as, as I'm saying here, we are very, very excited about what we're doing for the future. We've got a great, as I said, a great team looking out for us. We're working as closely as we can with the EDA and planning and zoning to make sure that we get feedback on, on everything we do. So, Mayor, with that, I'm going to take it around to our, our roundtable here, sir, and see if any of the Commissioners have a comment, if that's okay with you, sir.
Absolutely, sir.
At the far right here, I've got Renee Wicks. Renee, Renee's the, was a, again, came to us with hands on the case. She lived in, 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 in housing. So, her insight that she brings is absolutely phenomenal. And so, with that in mind, I appointed her to the Housing Committee. And she really has done a great job of helping us with the housing side. So, Renee, you got any comments?
Absolutely. First, thank you all for having us. And as Chair Lunde said, I have had the experience of living in Dale when it was first renovated. And my concern, or first and foremost, is the safety of the residents and the children. Whatever we can do, you know, working with council, you know, as Chair Lunde said, you guys advising us of, you know, what can be done. You know, I've seen a lot in the year that I lived in Dale's. I, I heard about public housing, but I never experienced it before then. And in my opinion, no one should have to live the way these residents are living. It's not safe. It's not fair. You know, we do what we can. I know the budget is tight with the police department, you know, where, where it limited as far as what we can do, as far as security. We've got a lot of work to do. And as he said, it's, it's not going to happen overnight. It, it's going to take time. But it's so much to be done. And the issue, or what he's putting on the table with housing for seniors is very dear to me as well. We have to make sure that our seniors are taken care of and in a place that's safe and fit. And some of these housing developments, they're, they're really not fit. They're, it's sad, you know? The crime is outrageous. And of course, we have no control over people's attitudes and, you know, what they would do. But it, it all starts at home. So, it, my thing is trying to get the residents engaged in, you know, people like to have something, you know? Give them incentives, you know? I, I don't know. I don't know what would work because these generations coming up now, they're, they're a different mindset. So, how to reach them, everybody's scratching their head, trying to figure it out. And it's tough. But we have a good board, as he said. And I've, I'm very pleased to be a part of this board. And we've got work to do. And we're willing to do whatever.
Thanks, Renee. Got next, Sean Prince. Sean, in my opinion, is one of those ones who really has his finger on the pulse in the city, really gets around a lot. I see him a lot of events. And with that in mind, because of Sean's, I think, caring for people, I, I pointed him head of our Human Resources Committee. And he's been working hard on our, on our bylaws and a lot of the, a lot of the rules that we have engagement for quality of life for the folks within PRHA. So, Sean, you've got it.
I don't have too much to say. I would like to piggyback off of the contract that we had with the city in 1954, 56. I think it really does need to be worked on and upgraded. It's a different time, different set of issues. And with that said, I'd like to piggyback again off of the fact that we've got a really good board. We all don't agree all the time. But I think that once we work through all of that, the decisions that are made, the quality of the decisions that are made are 100%. I, I very much appreciate my appointment to this board, as with another board that I sit on. I'm not a born and bred Portsmouth, but we chose to be here. And we chose to be here for a reason. Portsmouth has got a lot of history, a, a lot of black history, a lot of old history, a lot of family history, military history, one of the greatest and oldest in the country. And I think it's underutilized and it's understated. And I volunteered for one. I got called upon for this one. And if allowed to continue, my voice is to continue to bring Portsmouth forward. We've got a lot to offer that others don't even come close to. So, with that said, this particular board does a lot for our elders, a lot for our underprivileged. And I think that my take from this and my request from meeting with the City Council is we work with and of you guys. We're appointed by you guys. And we want to see this work for everybody. So, I just would like to see 2022, 23 be a great year, year and a half, and, and forward.
Thanks, sir. Clifton Pickens is our newest appointee. So, thank you very much for his appointment. He brings a tremendous wealth of real estate background, that's his business. But I felt that I really wanted to overwhelm him. So, I put him with me on the Finance Committee. And it's definitely spinning his head. He most recently went to the, we had the Virginia Housing, Virginia, Virginia Community Development Housing Seminar last week. And he was one of the two attendees that we had. And they definitely got his head swimming. So, thank you very much for his appointment.
As well, thank you for the appointment. It's much appreciated. I'm Portsmouth through and through. Born and raised in Portsmouth, and I grew up in Lincoln Park. So, having the appointment to the board is a personal thing for me. And I know what it was back then. Lincoln Park as a structure is gone now. It's been replaced with Lexington Place. But the community is still there. And my focus has always been bottom up. I know growing up in the neighborhood that if it wasn't for the basketball court, I probably wouldn't be here. But there's no more basketball court. When I did move back to Portsmouth, that was the first thing I wanted to do was go to Lincoln Park and see what it was. Completely different than it was when I grew up there. Yes, we deal with some of the same issues. But I feel that there's some changes that can take place. And getting, you know, my feet settled here on the board, getting familiar with how things work with the Housing Board and our partnerships with other committees and the council. My goal is just to try to figure out what we can do for the kids, for the youth. A lot of the problems, a lot of the crime that we're having in the city is not of the elders. It's of the youth. 12 to 14, 14 to 16. What can we do to give them something to do? Because it's at the point now where the question to themselves is what do we do when we have nothing to do? And we have a lot of examples of that. So, you know, I, I speak to you as the council. And I'll be coming to you later on with whatever communication that we have to figure out what we can do to put something back into the neighborhoods, not just Portsmouth housing, but for the kids. Like I said, the basketball court, as simple as it sounds, it's what saved me. I was in the middle of everything going on, on out there. But I wasn't involved in everything going on out there because I had that outlet. So, if I can leave that last in comment with you all, and you'll hear more from me about it. I look forward to working with you all in the future. And once again, thank you for the appointment.
Thanks, Clifton. Zakita Cost, again, another one of our, of the appointees that y'all made that lived in housing. So, again, the perspective that we have with folks that have actually walked the walk and, and now were able to help us talk the talk. But Zakita also has that housing background. But I felt that she, she, she's one that really has vision, really thinks outside the box. So, I have her working on our, our Development Committee. So, she's the Chair of our Development Committee.
Okay. I concur with Mr. Pickens. Same thing. I played sports. They kept me out of trouble. So, we need something for the kids to do. Just the leagues, it's only like six to eight weeks. Just that short period of time, it's not enough time for them to stay out of the streets. Like I said, I'm not sure if it's more community centers or something. They, they just need something to do, just to stay out of trouble. Also, with her in housing, their safety is the issue. I had family members hurt in Dale I had family members hurt in Dale's home from the shooting. And that bothers me. Excuse my voice, but it's personal.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure what you can do with the safety. I know you're on the staff with the police officers. I'm not sure what you're doing about it. But you got to hire some more people or get them a reason to come to Portsmouth, to work for us, to protect our city. So that's my main two points, just doing something for the kids and safety for our community, for PRHA and Portsmouth as well.
Thanks, Zakita. And of course, now our Vice Chairman, Miriam Jaggers, who really is probably one of our outspoken members on the board, but also brings to us some of the other boards, as she's been a part of here in the city of Portsmouth. So Vice Chair.
Thank you. Greetings to you all. I know you because I served on the Economic Development Authority Board before taking this appointment to the Redeveloping Housing Authority Commissioners Board. And having grown up in Portsmouth, I went to school with all of those classmates who were either in Outobara, Jeffrey Wilson, wherever they were, they were my classmates. And they always, and let me say this, I defend public housing residents because I know for a fact, they are some of the most creative, intelligent of us all. Out of public housing, Outobara, hell, judges, circuit court judges, superintendents of public schools across the country, teachers, principals, guidance counselors, shipyard workers, you name it, you name it. That was my experience in going to school with those students who lived in public housing. Now, let me say this. No question, we need more for our youth to do. I embrace creative sports. And one of those sports that I would like to see champion erected in our lexicon is a swimming pool that is of the size that will allow not just children in public housing, but from all across the city to train, to compete on the national level. And I know it can be done. We are a city of vision. We are a city of talent. We have the talent. And a lot of the crime is not being committed by public housing residents. It is not. It's coming from other areas of the city. And to me, the equation has always been and will be, you've got to have the engagement of the parents, sure. But sometimes if the parents are not on board, you don't let that stop you. You focus on education and focus on faith-based initiatives. That's always been the case. We have not always had parents engaged, but in spite of that, children excel. They excel. And I think what we have done thus far in Portsmouth with our public housing is to make sure we keep the vision alive that education will get you to the next level. It always has, and it always will. We've got a combination of military presence, and we have the church community, and we have educators, and we have sports. And quite frankly, you can't get no better than that to provide these children, as well as adults, with the vision. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor, thank you very much for the time. We have, in my opinion, I guess I said, I think we've been leaning forward. When the security crime matters started happening, we as a board made the decision that if we can't get folks to our staff meetings, and our staff meetings, it's very rare that we have somebody, that we were going to go out, all right? We've had a couple closed sessions to talk, open sessions, closed sessions to talk about security and other matters as Dale's personnel. We've had an extra session in our offices regarding crime and security. But we also, as I said, we felt that if they weren't going to come to us, we were going to go to them. So we've had off-site meetings at Lexington, we've had off-site meetings at Phoebus, and we've had off-site meetings at C-Board, and we'll continue to do those because we need to hear from the residents themselves about what our responsibilities are, what we should be doing, and then passing them on to the liaisons that we have that attend our meetings. We have a lot of dialogue going on between Mr. Bland and the city managers, so thank you very much. There's no doubt, sometimes we don't agree with what comes to us, but, you know, but the dialogue is happening. So I appreciate that. We have two members that are ex-official members of the EDA meetings, so we attend those meetings. Again, a lot of times while there's a lot of, you know, opinions that are on the contrary, at least the opinions are out there, all right? So I just want to leave it that we are back to work. We have been open. I'm sure like y'all, the residents have no problems texting us, emailing us, and calling us, all right? But as we always do, we have, I think we got the right Executive Director to take us where we need to go through this speed bump that we're having, move to work. I think he's moving in the right place when it comes to move to work, and we're excited about what we're trying to do with senior vision in this town, right? So sir, with that in mind, unless anybody's got any alibis, I'll give the gavel back to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And I just want to say before we open the floor to my colleagues on council, we sincerely appreciate the efforts of the team with Mr. Bland and the board. We understand we have just gone through a very difficult season with the pandemic and so many other things. And as you had stated, I'm not going to speak for everyone on council, but I'll speak as the mayor. We are committed. We are committed to ensuring that we have a good quality of life for our residents in the community and that they are safe and protected. So we will continue to work with you all and do the work and continue to communicate and build that relationship. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So with that, the floor is open. Is there any questions from my colleagues on council? Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chair Lallande, for the presentation. It was great information. Serving as a past liaison to PRHA, I've worked with some of you and welcome others of you because we've made the appointments and saw that you were worthy with skills and resources to be able to serve on this board. So we appreciate the work that you've put in to this with the $100 million budget. You've done a lot with that amount of funding that you have. One of the questions, or I guess directive, or maybe, you know, council consensive, when I was a liaison on PRHA, the question came up about the 1954 memorandum of understanding. And, you know, could we take, you know, maybe your attorney team, Karen, Attorney James, and maybe our attorney booth, and maybe anybody else who, you know, need to be involved in that and take a look at that and see, you know, maybe with City Manager and Executive Director Bland's, you know, approval or authorization to make those changes that are needed?
Thank you.
Because we've been talking about that for at least three years that I know of. So I know that that needs to be updated.
Thank you.
Another question that I had was about the, oh, the security. You said you have five part-time security officers. Are they spread out across units, or do you just use them where there seem to be high levels of, you know, crime issues or, you know, safety issues that you already notice? Or how is that actually allocated across the housing units?
I'll pass that to Mr. Bland since he has the specifics.
They come to all of our properties.
Okay.
They make sure they go through all the properties when they're working.
Right.
Naturally, some spots may be hotter than others, so they may spend more time than some.
Okay, right.
For example, they may not spend a lot of time in Phoebus, for example, but they may spend a lot of time in, let's say, Swanson or Dale. But let me just say too, and I think we said earlier, that probably less than 2% of all the crime that happened in our community are by residents who live there. It just so happened that crime that's committed are folks who come into the community. And that's not only in Portsmouth, that's on a national level. Data show that less than 2% of all the crime that happen on public housing property are actually residents who live in those communities.
Right, yeah, that's usually.
As I said earlier, because our residents really, they sign the lease, they're governed by the lease, and they respect the lease that they're signing.
And I guess, and then my last question, the old famous TCC building that was sold, was that a market rate sale, or is that some kind of incentive to a developer? Or is that private information that we?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, not at all. Ed?
It's going to be, it's a market rate sale. I think the, I believe, my was probably, I think the young lady may did a presentation with you guys and referenced that. But it's a market rate sale that's going to generate tax revenue for the city.
What was the dollar amount?
It's going to be, the price of that is a little more than, what was it?
1.9.
1.9? 1.9 million?
Yeah, we had several offers, and we boiled it down to three. We had them come in to talk to us, and their offer was very exciting for us, very exciting.
And last question, promise, promise, promise.
Oh, I thought that was the last one there.
Victory crossing where the Lowe's and the old Ruby Tuesdays is, I mean, I'm just putting it out there for me. If a Texas Roadhouse would be really nice because any time I go past the one in Churchill and can't get in there, go past the one at Greenbrier, can't get in there. If we put one in Portsmouth, we will hope people can get in there, you know? So that's all I have.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Lallande, and to each of the commissioners. Good to have you here today. I do have a policy question. You mentioned the significant amount of assets, 100 million in assets, and I think it was something like 28 million in revenue, and then the considerable amount of development that is taking place and future development. Where is your policy and where do you stand as far as monitoring the minority contracting? Because I hear quite a bit of discussion about the crime, and we talk a lot about security. And we know that at the root of that is the economic, social advancement of people. And one of the major pieces we've tried to address on council has been education, but it's also that economic piece. Where are you on that in regards to minority contracting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If you want to handle the question right ahead.
Okay, I like to handle that because that is certainly something that is near and dear to all of our hearts. And the way we approach it, obviously, we post on the PRHA website, but we also started to advertise in some of the minority publications, like the New Journal and Guide. And Ms. Adams, who is the director of the Contract Awards, she has numerous information seminars, and she makes sure that first, all those who are Portsmouth businesses are included, as well as minority contractors. She makes a concerted effort to make sure that information gets out. And in my opinion, we have come far because when I first came on the board, we were not specifically advertising in certain publications. But that changed, and for the better. And so, in my opinion, and Mr. Bland can speak to this, we have expanded the penetration of getting and communicating with the minority business community in terms of doing participation in our contracts. Would you like to add to that, Mr. Bland?
Let me just make sure the question that I'm asking, I'm more asking about policy. What policy do you have in place that addresses minority contracting?
Well, we follow the requirement that the federal government put out. We just cannot say we're going to give a percentage to minority contractors. We are federal dollars, so we have to follow the federal guidelines. So what I will do is, I can give you the, with those guidelines on, so you get somewhere to go. But as Vice Chair just said, but we make sure that all of the players that are able to do contract work, we send it to the state, to the state, which means that goes out to roughly thousands of contractors within the state, out of the state. So we do our best to make sure that we engage everybody of minorities, as well as non-minorities. But we can't specifically say we only going to do minority because that would be a violation of the federal requirement.
Well, that's not what I'm suggesting. I was asking, do you have a policy, a minority contracting policy in place? I wasn't talking about a set aside program. I was asking about.
It's HUD.
We follow the HUD procedure. We will govern by the HUD procedure. We got to follow that.
If you could just pull that back and just get that information to the city manager and Dr. Whitaker there and provide it to him about what the HUD policy is, since we are governed by that policy.
Right. And also, have you done any type of disparity study at all to see about the fairness in your awards and if there has been any unutilized groups in contracting within PRHA?
We have not did a study of that nature. So to answer the question, we haven't.
Yeah, but that's not a bad idea. That would be a bad idea to take a look at that. We have not, sir.
How do you monitor that, then?
Well, and like I'm saying, right now, we're monitored by making sure that we are not violating the federal requirement. Because that's who, our number one responsibility is to the federal government, and we're monitored by the Richmond Field Office. And so I guess the best way to answer that is we make sure that we're not violating any of the federal requirements when we put out RFPs, RFQs for work to be done.
That doesn't necessarily measure outcome, though. But do you have any data as far as the developments that you've done and the percentage of contracts that have gone to minority contractors?
Well, at this moment, we have two minority developers. So anything that we build going forward in the future, right now, we have two minority developers.
But do you keep data on contracts that are awarded to minority contractors?
We have, we have that information. Yes.
We provided that at every monthly meeting through the Significant Activities Report, and Ms. Adams specifically always will reference which of the businesses are minority contractors. Because she references it because she knows I'm going to ask the question, to know what the answer is going to be. But she does that in our Significant Activities Report, and she verbally presents that at every meeting monthly.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Barnes, and then Councilman Mooney, so you have the floor.
Thank you. When it comes to you guys doing deals with businesses from your property, do you guys consult with the city first, or do you just do it on your own, specifically some of these car washes that we've had on you guys' property?
We have no car washes on our property, sir, and we've never.
We found one in Frederick.
It was a sale.
It was a sale. We sold the property.
So when it comes to selling the property, do you guys consult with the city first, just to see if that's something that they want?
Well, just let me go back to the car washes. We had nothing to do with car washes. There's been some mislabeling about car washes. With that particular property, if we're talking the one on Frederick, we had the EDA Director come to us and recommend to sell that property to that particular developer because we were briefed that they had some negotiations going on, all right? And so based on that recommendation, and it was a fair, fair offer, based on what the EDA wanted, we did that. But as far as any development that we have, all right, I guess, I better let Mr. Bland talk about that. Again, as I said, we have two members on the EDA, ex-official members. So I think as best as we do without giving out what the numbers are on negotiation, we're always talking with the EDA, zoning, planning, because we don't need to do a development. It's not going to happen. It just doesn't do us any good.
So you communicate with the EDA?
Yes, sir.
On those issues before?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bland, you can speak to that, too.
And keep in mind too, because as a housing authority, we don't have the authority to And keep in mind, too, because as a housing authority, we don't have the authority to approve anything going on, on any lot.
Yes, sir.
That's through your, that's through your planning department, the city, but the housing authority, contrary to what may have been said, we don't have the authority to say what would go on any piece of property, everything that be built has to go through city zoning, and those requirements, we don't have that authority.
But thanks for clearing that up, because I had a discussion with, with EDA regarding that, and they, and they kind of did say that it was you guys who.
Well, we'll take all that credit for.
It's a sale or a purchase.
We'll take all the credit we can get, but when it comes to putting businesses on properties, that is, that is not our decision, sir, that's, that's the city's decision.
It's the sale of the property or the purchase of the property?
Sir.
Councilman Moody, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and appreciate the service that the commissioners put for, for the city. My question, you have a lot of properties, and it takes a lot of maintenance, a lot of different skills to maintain those properties. Speak to me about your employee base, reference the number, the pay range, and how you procure your employees. Maybe that's a question for Mr. Blain.
Well, when we have a vacant position, we not to re-adapt, re-adapt in the local paper, we also, when we have a vacancy, we put it, we ask the city to put it on their website also, so we open up part of best qualified folks for our preferred positions that we have. And our pay, our pay range is comparable to what the other housing authorities are paying in the region, we do care what Norfolk is paying, what Chesapeake is paying.
Which is, what is that range?
Well, it depends on the position, it may depend on the position, and, and so, we look at the position, and we look at the pay range of those positions and things like that. And then, at the same time, we also, from time to time, we do do a, what you call it, a salvage study, most housing authorities do a salvage study, to see, to see what the ranges are, and we are comparable to what the other housing authorities are paying within the region and within the state. Now, I will say, depending on, I use, for example, a maintenance man that working in Washington DC is going to make more than a maintenance man that work in Portsmouth because of the cost of living. So ranges going to vary based on the location, but based on what we are paying within this region here, is comparable to what's the market, what the market is paying.
How many boys does the housing authority have?
I'm sorry, what?
How many employees?
Roughly full-time employees, we have less than 80 full-time employees, and then we bring on part-time employees also, but full-time, we have less than 80.
But Mr. Blain has been very good on bringing to us those challenges that he's had, whether he needs to authorize a bonus, he needs to authorize a pay raise, we, we're not unlike any other large organizations, we are hurting for, from top all the way to the bottom. Maintenance workers, maintenance, true, true skilled tradesmen, which was what we need. We went through a cycle there of about six job fairs, we didn't get one person come to our table, and we participate a lot of the job fairs here, and to the top, property managers, assistant property managers. There's a lot of competition out there, Councilman, and we're, we're trying to be as creative as we can. Mr. Blain has worked hard on the health benefit that we offer, to make sure that's attractive to folks. We're part of the Virginia Retirement Fund, so we have no, no play there, but if you've got solutions for us, sir, we're more than happy to take them, because I think right now, we're sitting on a couple maintenance folks and a couple property managers that we really need. I'm not saying property managers aren't needed, but we need to keep these houses repaired, so we're having that challenge.
Do you have to rely on a lot of the subs, as far as subbing out work?
Yes.
Yeah, we just, we just awarded, I don't know if it was three or six contracts, to, to give us that flexibility that we have to go outside to bring somebody in, but sir, we're doing everything we can to keep it maintained.
And, and I will say, right now, and talking about colleagues across the country, not just here, we all have the same problem. You know, right now, it's more an employee market, they're going where to get the most money, and they don't, may not look at the benefits, but when, when we do our benefits, and everything, it's comparable to what they're going on the open market, but they look at that, they want that cash coming in. As the Chair just said, we're in the state pension plan, we're also within the state healthcare plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sir, we've got a, we've got a, for the first time in three years, we're going to have a retreat in June.
Yes.
So a lot of these things were talked about, and hopefully, we'll be able to come back when you invite us to say, hey, you know, we've updated our vision, and again, good your support and guidance on where we're going to, but I'm sure Mr. Blain will be reaching out to some of the staff here at the city, because we'd love to have them in attendance as they, as we have that retreat in June.
Thank you, so we, we are running short on time, so Councilman Whitaker, you have the floor.
And I was just about to say that, for the sake of time, I'm going to run right through this, I appreciate you, Vice Chair, Jigges, Chair, Bruce Alonde, and board members. I do appreciate your vision you have for our seniors, and I think it's an excellent idea for us to try to make sure we get adequate housing for them, so we can get some more millennials or some younger people to come in and restore some of the historical houses that we have throughout our city. But I do want to know, could we get some more information on your, like, I like to call it the ESCOP program that you have running over in Swans, I pretty much did a walk myself and see all the cameras, and pretty much I seen how your personnel covered the grounds, I think they're more stationed as dales, I'm sorry, dales than, than other properties, so could you give that information, budget wise, what it takes for you guys to run that program, because that's something that, I think I said, the manager put on, Jenna sent us an email on it, but if you guys can give us a little bit more detail on that.
All right, sir, and we'd love a check if you could write it, sir.
That's further, that's further discussions.
That's another meeting.
That's another meeting.
Okay, one more question from Dr. Whitaker.
But you do, you guys are in that district, so it would be nice, and also, I just want to see if it's true or not, I, I think you guys have talked about Swans, and you know, we're not rushing the tenants out, I do appreciate you guys for, you know, taking care of that situation with a level of care, but it was talks of that would turn into a retention bond, is that true or false, I'm just.
We have no plans for Swans, we have no plans, sir.
All right, that's all that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Just a quick question, Chairman, you mentioned during the senior housing vision, a five-year plan, did I understand correctly, you were saying that to get millennials into some of the properties, that the seniors who live in those properties are being moved to senior housing?
Just, just a dream, just a dream, it's, you know, the vision is, if we could, if we can help seniors who run fixed incomes, you know, in affordable housing that we could do, I would hope that millennials, that, just talking from a marketing perspective, that target, 125,000 to 150,000, is usually what a first-time home buyer buys.
So, I want to make sure, so the senior who is living in a private home would be moved to a senior?
If, again, we want to create the opportunity for them to move into senior housing, so that's why we're trying to build senior housing.
So how would, they would be compensated for their house to move into?
Sir, how they, how they get rid of their property would be a private thing, or we just want to give an option for seniors to go into the city.
Can I piggyback off of that, sir? The, the idea would be that the seniors would have an opportunity to move into a place that's affordable for them, that they didn't have to worry about, which would open up that 125 to 175,000 historic home, that can be renovated, that would bring 300,000 worth of tax credit to the city, that type of thing. Nobody's moving anyone out, it's just opening up senior homes that are safe, that are affordable for them to live their life through, and open up some of these older homes that can be renovated for the millennials to come in, gentrify.
It's an older home that that senior is presently living in.
That they're willing to move out of, it's, no, no one's moving anyone out, it's just opening up affordable senior housing that these individuals can move into, that are comfortable, that they can live their lives out, and this three-story home that they no longer have to deal with, a millennium can go in, renovate it, and bring it from 100,000 to 275,000, which would benefit everybody.
It's just an opportunity.
It's just an opportunity.
I would hope that council would definitely get more information on that, because of the issue of generational wealth that we've seen happen.
Well, it's, and again, it's, it's not a plan, it's just, it's a vision where everybody benefits, older gets to be somewhere where they're comfortable, can live their life out, not have to pay for all the upkeep, someone younger can come in, bring this house up to spec, and move on.
I would like to get more information on that.
And that someone younger could be someone from the family.
From the family, yeah. It's, it's, no one's moving anyone out, that's not.
I think what the operative is, what, what you're saying is, because I've seen this done in other, other cities, that senior would have to sell their property.
Yeah, it's, it's not a take.
From selling, it's their choice, but I understand what you're saying, they sell their property and move into somewhere nice, that has the amenities, that will make it more comfortable for them to live out their senior years, and once they sell their house, there's an opportunity for millennials or younger, younger people, singles however, to move into those environments, and, and revitalize them, and make it more.
Mayor, at the, at the, the delegation that's, the House, the state delegations is meeting right now, they did a study that looked at 18 reports over the last six years across the localities in the state of Virginia, and it's House, House Bill 854, and the number one, number one thing they, they said emerged from the reports, is seniors need additional housing options to age-stately and affordability. So it was, what I would, I'll get a copy of that HB report, because it's a very big report, but it definitely addresses seniors, and not only that imports, that disports it, but in the Commonwealth, it's an issue.
And what I was going to say.
And we want to address that.
What I want to say, Councilman Whitaker.
No, sir, I, I don't know if it does or not.
That bridge, that bridge, I think that you're talking about, that is why the elderly home repair program is so critical, because for seniors, you have to be a senior at a certain age, I think it's 62, and at that age, you can apply for this straight-up grant to do repairs to your home, that will allow you to stay in your home longer, and so, that's why we're very proud of that program, because you don't have to go from needing repairs, losing your house, and so, I did want to just reiterate that, because it says home repair program down here, but it didn't say elderly home repair program, and that is critical to know, that we certainly are focusing on trying to help our seniors as much as possible to be able to stay in their own home with repairs.
Thank you all, thank you all so much for your service and for being here today. Councilman Battle, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the gentleman that I am, I allowed everybody else to go first, and I hope I get the same spec that I gave you. I'm on several boards, and I've had three of the boards produce the same scenario, which is, we're going to get with the city manager, we're going to get with the head of the board and the director, and we're going to talk about the problem that we have, or the business that's applying to come in, and the EDA will get with all, all of us get together, but you always leave out the city council representative. Now, I can't speak for my colleagues, but when you have those meetings in the future, all means, please include me. You see, we won't have these problems of what Mr. Barnes was talking about, so again, let me emphatically say, please include me, if I'm on the board, and I will do that to those who have in the past mentioned the same scenario of this, that, that, and leave out the city council representative. Now, let me say this as fast as I can, the greatest obligation to us is our obligation to our human resource. That doesn't mean just the children, that doesn't mean just the old folk, that means all of them. If we're going to start a project and put a development together of housing, we have to strategically plan to add those services to accommodate the population. A case in point is this, there's more to teaching a kid to play football than football, there's more to giving an 18-year-old a place to stay, and say, oh, beautiful place, she has it, it's more than that, it's services that help develop these folk. And see, when we don't meet that obligation, and we want to brag about what place we're in, in the city, and all those sort of things, and we're suffering with the crime, and the losing of our kids, 80% of them can't read, we're failing, and let nobody fool us. And again, we got to get serious, we can't put folk in these positions that don't bring a professionalism to them, because what you put there, that's what you're going to get. We have to at all times talk about integrity and right and wrong, we assume that the lady that we give, the little young folk we give an apartment to that's 18-years-old, know how to keep it up, that's a service that goes along with you laying that responsibility on them, until we start thinking in that perspective, we're always going to be reactive. Now, now that we, in the thought realm of where we should go and how we should do it, it should become easier for us, but we have to do it together, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, you've been so kind.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for your service, this meeting is adjourned. We'll take about a three-minute recess, and we'll reconvene for our next work session, which will be with our Economic Development Authority. We now call to order our public work session with our friends of the Economic Development Authority, I want to thank Chairman Smith and interim Director of Economic Development, Mr. Brian Donahue, and all of the members of our Economic Development Authority for being with us this evening, and sir, I think you're familiar with this stuff, so if you could please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Donahue. Good evening. Commissioner Barber?
I'm present.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Drury?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell? Commissioner Saunders-Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Mrs. Smith, present.
And Chairman Smith?
Yes, all, all three Smiths.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Absolutely. Sir, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, and good evening, I hope you got my, my little note here, I, I, you know, I could talk for an hour, but I decided to put it down so I wouldn't overlook, so I would make sure that I covered necessary things, so you can, you know, follow along with me, hopefully I, I breeze through this to get us going. Today, we thank council for this opportunity to, hopefully to have a candid discussion that will give us a chance to understand your positions, your thoughts, your focus, priorities for this city's economic development future. We sincerely hope you are fully aware that we are one of the only EDA authorities that is not fully funded by a city government, except the staff. We, we have been successful in raising necessary funding through land sales and acquisitions. These resources have, have allowed the EDA to provide much-needed financial support and incentives to attract new businesses and assist the expansion of our existing business community. As you know, we recently launched a new business investment grant program called Smart Start Business Development and Acceleration Grants, which are focused on supporting the creation and growth of small women and minority and veteran-owned businesses. We all realize that Portsmouth is a small business capital here, due to the fact that we don't have the land that some of the other outlying rural cities like Suffolk and even the Beach and Chesapeake have, so we're, we're limited as far as big corporations and industry. We, we have also revamped and streamlined our real property investment grants to assist new and expanding businesses. to assist new and expanding businesses and commercial property owners with funding for property improvements. This fiscal year alone, EDA programs have supported forty-five small businesses, eighty-two percent which are minority-owned, which is one of our focuses. The EDA has also supported the creation and the launch of the Portsmouth At Work Center for Talent Development and Retention Initiative to assist unemployment, unemployed and underemployed residents while building the pipeline for future workers, which is in great demand because of what, what's already coming to the city. Its goal is to help build accessibility to workforce resources, services that prepare individuals for meaningful employment that increases their quality of life. Since its launch in 2021, Portsmouth Work Center has assisted four hundred and forty, four hundred and thirty-four citizens with career training, two hundred and thirty-five with direct job placements. Ninety-eight percent at-work participants have been minority citizens. The EDA provides assistance for business in applying for various state and federal assistance programs such as the Virginia Enterprise Zone Tax Exemption Programs, the Opportunity Zones Historic Rehab Tax Credits, Hub Zone via the Small Business Administration, Post Port Host Community Revitalization Fund. What has meant, what this has meant to Portsmouth in 2021, new capital investment of four hundred and sixty-nine million, a steady increase over four years, and a total of one billion in investment over the same period. Business investments provided and connected two million in local, state, and regional incentive, incentives in the last five years. All in all, increasing incomes, population, access to talented workers, educational facilities, increasing large business growth, including some of our larger developments are fairly integrated, that's right behind us over here, that's, that will be reassembling compartments for carriers, future carriers and submarines for, and be barged to Newport News. The lineage logistics, the cold storage facility, the huge, and we all took that tour too, is, is just magnificent establishment that will assist the port in handling items that need to be stored. Entertainment, the entertainment district with the overwhelming support for the first new casino development in the state ahead of four other localities. The EDA will be looking to collaborate and this is, this is our, the key that take away from this meeting, that we do want to collaborate and work along with city council as development opportunities come to you. We want to partner with organizations, other business partners to bring future development to our city via proposals, beginning with our waterfront holdings and others as the opportunities are presented to us. We will ensure minority participation and equity agreements when possible. Our, our lack of huge hard capital funds will press us to work open-minded and openness to offering incentives within our reach. We also acknowledge that debt capacity limitations will lead us to those that are willing to fully fund developments with limited city assistance. I don't see anybody around the table, I know Paul knew him very well, but one of the persons that, that I learned a lot from was our former mayor Holly, who gave me instructions when he appointed me to the Holiday Inn Project Committee. And he, he told me, he called me in his office over there, he says, Smitty, let me tell you, Portsmouth don't have no money. Anybody that comes here asking for it, you tell them we don't have it. And so what the takeaway I took from that is that developers need to come, you know, ready to go with funding. Of course, I believe the city manager could possibly, and we could possibly work out some types of incentives, but there isn't a lot to go around and we just need to be honest about that. Our authority members believe we are ready and prepared to take on the challenges that lie before our city economically. Our reason is, again, is to hear from you and to have a discussion on where we all want to, to see the city head. And this is the gist of what we want to do with you, to hear from you, what, what directions, if y'all have any, that we would like to be involved with and don't want to be left out from being at the table. Especially my, my fearless leader here.
Well, thank you, thank you Chairman Smith. And if, if I could just begin the conversation, one of the things that I, I focused on with the State of the City address was how well we have done in terms of growth with the team that we have and also focusing on our future opportunities that are present. But I just want to acknowledge the work that you all put in as a board because with a lot of those projects that we were able to complete and, and bring to the city, it would not have happened without your leadership and without your hard work and it's greatly appreciated from where I sit. And, and we look forward to continuing to create the environment that is, is, is the huge message to our region and state and nation that Portsmouth continues to be open for business and we want you to come here and do business. So with that said, I would open the floor to my colleagues on council. Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I wanted to share this with you guys. There's been three of the boards that I'm on whose standard operating procedure is, let's meet with the city manager, the EDA director, the head of the board, and let's talk about this project. That's fine, but I don't want you to do that anymore and exclude the representative from the city council. From this point on, that's a no-no. It's evidently been SOP because you're not on the board that does it. But please, if I'm on your board, please include me. And you guys are doing a wonderful job with the training. I love that. Continue to do it. That's God's sin. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
I just want to piggyback off of him as regards to the training. I know a couple of people who actually went through some of the programs that you guys have and they're giving me a thumbs up on how successful it's been for them. So continue with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you Chairman Smith and board members. Good to see you all today. As a past member of the Economic Development Authority for ten years, you know, I, I understand the work that you do and I know how passionate you can get about some of the development that comes up in and around. My question is the future development that's on the waterfront. And I know that we've had past unsolicited bids and we've had proposals and, you know, we, you know, have a direction about RFP, you know, which direction we want to go, you know. And I know we can't do this in a thirty-minute conversation, so it probably would be advantageous for us to come together in a retreat maybe with the, the EDA and council, you know, if that's a consensus of the council and maybe even PRHA and council all together because some of these ideas that we have are all related to our growth and our economic development and business retention and growth for the city, you know, the kind of things that we all looking for. But just, you know, what kind of ideas were you thinking about for the waterfront? I mean, is that, you know, something that we would work together on or, you know, do you already have some ideas on which?
No.
Okay.
No, we, that's why we're here because we want to know. You, you're gonna lead that effort and we want to, we just asked them to be a part of it.
Okay.
And to be invited to the table. We are, we've met with the Housing Authority and, you know, they've, they've let us know as I'm pretty sure, I think I heard a little bit, that their primary focus now is gonna be on housing, you know, for seniors and for low-income. And they, they kind of branched out, you know, into commercial, but they've turned a lot of that over to us. So they don't really have any large parcels any longer. But we will still, they, the, the good thing about the Housing Authority is they have resources for funding, you know, federal and state. So if it's, if it's ways to, to also partner with them, that's one of the entities that I mentioned when I say partner with groups is them. Because we are, we have them at our meeting, as you know. And we, we, we had to do some little patching up with them to get on, on the same accord. But, so no, to answer your question, we, we have no, we, we were set to make a move, you know. I know when I came on the EDA as far as the Holiday Inn property itself, but we, we just put all of that on hold. So there's no other plans for any waterfront.
Okay, and then, and I know when we met with our PRHA, they mentioned that they gave the Holiday Inn garage back to us. So, you know, that whole parcel would be something that, you know, we have, you know, could come together and come up with great ideas on, you know, some things that could be done. We just need to, you know, get with the city manager and determine how we move in that direction if we want to go RFP or if we want to look at, I mean, I know people will come with unsolicited bids and proposals all the time, but we, as a council, have to decide how we want our future of the waterfront to look. And my last question is, you mentioned the grant, the Smart Business Development Acceleration Grant. Was there any match on that grant with the city? I know that the grants that we see that come through for resolutions, a lot of times there's a match, somebody giving some money to match whatever it is. Is that an opportunity? Was that a possibility?
Would you like, care for me to speak to that?
Sure.
Thank you for the, the question, Councilwoman Lucas Burke. So we actually have two different small business grants that we have launched as of January of this year. The first is the, we call it the Smart Start Business Development Grant. That's for new businesses and businesses up to three years of, of age in existence. There is no match requirement for that. So that is a $2,000 micro grant to assist those businesses that are just starting out, your startups, your entrepreneurs who are launching and need assistance and getting established. We have a second grant, which is our acceleration grant, and that's really to help expanding businesses between three and seven years of existence. That does require a match. It's a twenty percent match requirement. And the maximum grant award under that program is $5,000. So essentially, and it's a reimbursement, so if you spend $6,000, you're going to receive $5,000 back from the EDA. And they've been very well received. We've, I think, to date, in the short period of time that we have implemented, implemented the program this year, have helped over thirty businesses in both of those programs.
Councilman Moody, I think you had a question, sir?
Yeah. And Councilwoman Lisa Burke touched on it. And Ray, earlier you mentioned that Mayor Holly had appointed you to, to a group.
Yeah, you were here.
Yeah, I was here, I remember that. But unfortunately, the memory of that is fading. You know, to me, that's probably the most frustrating piece of undeveloped property. And in the old city, we don't have many green areas that can accommodate a development. And that, that parcel has been described as the most premier piece of waterfront property probably in the region. And, you know, it's good that we meet and kick around ideas, but Ray, you've been to a lot of those meetings and I certainly have. And everybody comes up with good ideas, but here, probably fifteen years later, the property is still vacant. I'm convinced that, you know, you don't vacate it and they'll come seek you out. I think in a lot of cases, you have to market the property. And I know there've been some initiatives, but none of them have been successful. Before the last great recession hit, we did have a proposal from a group out of Texas. And unfortunately, the economy went south and their project went south. They went from a primo development to a stick development that was underwhelming and not suited for that piece of property. But what are we doing from a marketing standpoint to, to market that property? You know, we, we've been in, at least the window on post-COVID, the interest rate has been fairly good. That, all that, I'm afraid all that's getting ready to change. But that window of opportunity, I think it's not gonna be there much longer in the short term. So what are we doing to aggressively market that, that property?
Well, let me, let me say this about that. We were all set to, to do just that when I came on the EDA in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. But we kind of put it on hold because council members change and, you know, and that's, that's the best answer I can give you. But I'll let Brian, who was here, if he has anything to add to that. That's from my point of view, is what kind of stagnated things, the changing of the council and, and the anticipation as to the direction, and that's why we're here now, that the council may have wanted to take that, we wouldn't be in step with. So, Brian.
So to first step back a little bit and look at some of the history of the property, I think as you're aware, for a long time, there were multiple entities that had ownership interest in that property. And we have worked over the last two years to consolidate ownership of that site to the point where now it's city-controlled. And when I say city-controlled, city council and EDA. I think that was one of the first issues we needed to work through to ensure that we had the ability to effectively market that property. In the past, you had different interests and obviously four entities to represent it in doing that. So we do have full control of the entire six acres, which includes the former Holiday Inn site, the parking garage, the former portside location and the former visitor center location. So it's about a six-acre site in total, fully controlled now by the, the city essentially. So we are now at a point where we feel like we can effectively market the property because we have direct control over what our vision is, what our desire is to see from a development standpoint and then moving forward with negotiating with any interested party, whether that be through a request for proposal process or entertaining unsolicited offers on the property. So to answer your question, we have not effectively marketed that property since the last effort was made in the early 2000s because we had some issues to work through. And I think we're now at a point where we can do that. But we would like to work with the city council to ensure that when we do that, we're doing it correctly and that we're doing it with a shared vision and a shared set of goals. So I think we're at that point today and engaging with the city council to say, let's do that together. We have the resources now, we're in a position to do so. So how do we move forward to do that together?
And one of the first things that we have, or will be dialoguing about in reference to that is the monstrosity of the parking garage over there because that's, that's always been an issue. In the beginning, the parking garage was a big part of the cost with some infrastructure that the developer wanted money to cover that. And, and in that case, the city, they, they asked for, for the money and the city didn't know what they wanted the money for. So we, we asked and it was, I said it was seven million dollars. And then the city said, well, if that's all you need the money for, we can do it cheaper. So the city, you know, went out and took out a loan for the seven million and were prepared to do it. And, but the, that never materialized because... But the, that never materialized because they went, like Bill said, that all died. So now, we see that to be the first obstacle, that, because we, you know, the folks in the tower still have to have 250 slots. So if we, if we can generate and do things in advance, that'll probably even help the process more.
Okay. Thanks.
So.
Mr. Battle, you have the floor, sir.
So the EDA and the city council and the layers of the city government have worked, been working at a process for quite a while, together, always. So you, the EDA, at this time, feel a need to fulfill a need of a vision that you have for the waterfront. That's the essence of the meeting. So what need do you seek to fulfill at this point? And what parameter of stretching or policy are you saying we need to put in place to fulfill your need at this time?
Well, we, we're not saying that at all.
Oh.
No, we, we, we come to you for you to tell us if, if you see, what you see, you know, should happen, because we, we've kicked some things around, but it hasn't been anything real serious. So, but we, we've, we want to know what direction you were headed, you know, unsolicited proposal or, you know, RFP or however you want to do it. We, we wanted to, to see possibly if you had some ideas to help us set a course.
Well, A, the land is so popular, we don't need to market it. That would be a waste of our financial resources and so forth. What restraints are you looking to be freed of in reference to this property? You say you want to be a part of. Explain what you mean to be a part of. What do we have to do to fulfill the need of the part that you want to play?
Well, my experience in the past, there's a couple of different ways that developers approach. They can approach city manager directly, like y'all just got with the unsolicited proposal. They could approach any one of you who would then carry it. They can come directly to the EDA. So those are the conduits that developers can choose to come to. I think personally, sometimes they choose to, to jump over to y'all through the city manager to, you know, but, and that's, that's, because that's what happened recently with unsolicited proposal. They, they didn't come to us with it, they came directly to y'all with it.
That's all unsolicited proposals that go to the city?
No, no. The developer chooses how he, who he wants to approach.
Okay.
You know.
But it has to eventually go to the city manager.
The buck stops at y'all.
But it goes to the city manager to get credence and.
On y'all's behalf, right.
Really be looked at.
Right, right.
And the city manager has to approve that.
That's right.
So what relief are you seeking in reference to your involvement?
No, no relief, just dialogue that y'all, you know, will want us to be a part of it.
Well, you're always a part of it. It comes through you. We make you aware and then you make the transactions on which direction we want to go.
Yeah, well, you.
Do you mind if I say something?
Well, let me, let me, you, you have, you have let us know that, you know, you, as our liaison, that you, we are a part. You know, we just want to hear things from everybody. You, you're there with us, and so you, you dialogue with us, you talk to us.
I'm there, but I'm not there sometimes.
Well, it depends, so, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, you're there actually the most. I mean, you're the one we see and we talk with and we hear from you.
Yes, but a lot of things go on that don't include me, that should include me.
Well, and that's why we're here, because I'll be honest, I would be one of the ones who would be like, okay, let's go market it, let's do our thing, and then we will bring it to city council and see what they say.
Oh, so that's what y'all want to do?
No, not at all. So, so why we're here is because that's not the way we're going to do it, because we do want to know what your thoughts are. I mean, we hear from it in city council meetings, and I listen every other Tuesday night at home on, okay, well, we're, we don't want to do this, or we do want to do this because we want to make sure we have the plan.
So.
But we want to know what the plan from the individual members are. And I would though say, sir, that as someone who sold the city for many years with the Renaissance and went out to market this city before it had a hotel of that caliber, I will say, it is not the easiest job. It was the most challenging, but also the most rewarding job I've ever had to sell this waterfront. But I will tell you, they will not just come because everybody has a waterfront. Everybody has a waterfront. I've had to go to them, sell against them, and so in order to get the very best, because we don't want just what anybody's going to offer us, we want the very best for that piece of property, which means we have to go out there and look for it and let them know we're offering it up.
So it kind of sounds like you want to include us.
Exactly.
Oh, we want to work together. Go ahead, go ahead.
We already work together. We already have policy system in place and guidelines of what you can do, what she can do, what all of us can do. So where we're trying to go.
Who wants your thoughts?
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, some of the dialogue that we're having in this joint session is very different from what we have in our EDA meetings. And basically, our commissioners want to see growth and development in the city. A lot of the proposals that came to the city were unsolicited proposals, and as a result, they were shot down or discontinued, they didn't make it the full process. What we would like to see is some solicitations for your most prioritized, blighted area, send out requests for proposals to developers. Let the best developer with the best ideas for it come in with their proposals, let it go through the council procedure, and let's move from there. But I want to just like get back what we really wanted to come in this meeting and session about, was to see development in the city.
And, and also what we wanted to know was your feelings about it, because you need continuity. You know, you want, you don't want a hodgepodge putting things that doesn't fit with the flow of where the city is going. And that is the entire waterfront property and, and downtown properties as well. So I guess we want a direction as to, what do you, what do you want to see there? I mean, we have ideas, but we want to know what is it, what do you see?
Well, maybe all proposals should come to us first, and then we involve y'all.
Well, no, we not, we not going there. We, that's not.
I mean, but, but you want to know what we want? I mean, doesn't that make sense in a way since we'll do?
It, it, it does, sir, makes sense, but, but, but in the interest of, of other questions, Dr. Whitaker has a question, then Councilman Woodard, and then I think we move forward with what I think, what, what I'm hearing, I would, I would like to make a recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Smith, and to all of the commissioners. Chairman Smith, in your opening statement, you mentioned about needing to get this chance to understand our thoughts and positions. And to the entire commission, I believe that there is a need to make sure that whatever we do in the city is done with equity and openness. That is something that is, that has to be policy-driven. And I noticed in your write-up, you, you mentioned that we will ensure minority participation and equity. How do you plan on ensuring that?
Let me explain that any, any of that is bound by law, state and federal law. So every time I've been involved in minority participation, it was negotiated and agreed upon voluntarily, because we can't force that on any developer or business by law.
So has the city attorneys advised you of that?
Yes, and my years of dealing with school board, 10 years, and the way we did business and the way we couldn't, things we couldn't do, I learned that back in that day. And then carried over with city council too. But yes, the, our city attorneys have told us that, yes.
So the city attorneys have recently advised you that you cannot be involved in having any type of negotiation on minority contract? Or are you saying that's non-negotiable? What, what are you saying?
I'm saying that everything along that line is open for discussion. If a developer wants to voluntary, that's good. If we asked, you know, and he agrees, that's the way it works.
I would, I think we need to have a session, when you're saying what, what is needed, I think we need to have a session with the city attorney, EDA, particularly to update you so that, make sure that what you're saying is in line with what the city attorney's office is advising, and I think that would be something.
And it is.
Well, I know that from school board experience such as you, we put in place a minority contracting program. I know there are cities that have minority contracting programs in place. So when you say we will ensure that, that the only way that can be ensured is through some policy.
Right.
So you can't, you know, so, so you asked what, what our thoughts were. So that's what I'm suggesting, that the EDA needs to bring a more equitable position to development. When you tell me in your write-up that there's a billion dollars of development, and then we look at the fact that minority contracting, that there are significant disparities. When we get proposals and we have to ask questions about minority contracting that has come through EDA, that shouldn't be something that council has to rigorously inquire about. It should have been something that had already been cleared through EDA. And that's why I'm saying that requires policy. And, and I believe that if we're going to move forward, it needs to move forward in an equitable way where we have participation across the board, not just training. Training is necessary, but training does not necessarily lead to contracting. And so I just want to, you know, express, express that. I, I don't think that there's been any type of disparity study that you all have done that would support any type of contracting program that you put in place. Again, that's something that I would think the city attorney would need to advise, and I don't even know if you all have had a discussion on, on that at all. When you talk about the Smart Start Business Development and Acceleration Grants, and you mentioned that they support small, women, minority, and veteran-owned businesses, when that type of information is given and it's money that's involved, I know as a council person or on, on any position, seeing this aggregated data that breaks out who's receiving what, that's open and more fair than to just say we have supported these entities. Well, what percentage of small has been supported? What percentage of women, minority? I think that.
We have that.
Well, I'm just saying, when.
We get reports on that. Even with the casino, we're getting reports on that.
Okay, well, what I'm suggesting is when you report to us like in this, that would be good information for council to have that disaggregated. When you talk about the incentives that are given, who's receiving the incentives? How much incentives are being given to different developers? Because I remember when Dr. Cook, the former president of ODU, in the report, State of Hampton Roads, I believe, that he would put out, he mentioned the fact that for much development, particularly, he was talking about Portsmouth, that because of the wealth of the waterfront and all, that the incentives is the property itself. And so I'm, I'm just curious, you know, what, who's getting these incentives and what form are they being given? And, and that's more the specificity that, that I would like to see, because I think that's a little more open and transparent.
But we can surely provide all the medium.
Then my last question or issue, the former Holiday Inn site that was discussed, it said that it's now fully under the control of the city and EDA?
Yeah.
Okay, that property had private partners involved. How were they, how were they liquidated?
Do you want to answer that?
GBDC?
Right. So the, Dr. Whitaker, to answer your last question, the EDA, the EDA assumed ownership of the Holiday Inn site. And with that, the debt that was held on that property and was associated with its acquisition, and that has been paid off. So the EDA has full control of that property now. Of course, the city owns the parking garage, portside, and visitor center. So the, the EDA received that property from the Greater Portsmouth Development Corporation, removed that from that entity, and that was where some of those issues that we spoke to earlier were preventing some of the progress and efforts to, to move forward. So that is the process.
That was dissolved.
Yeah, I understand that. My question is, when it was dissolved, there were, there was a private entity involved? And how was that private entity compensated or not compensated?
There was no compensation to any of the.
So they just, they, the investment that they put in it, they just voluntarily walked away from it?
The EDA assumed that loan and therefore relieved them of that, that debt and that obligation, so the EDA.
It was, it was debt. It wasn't money, it was debt.
So that, that was a private debt that the private entity took out?
The combined entities that were under the umbrella of that organization.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Well, if, if I'm hearing you correctly, you, you had a private entity that invested, and when it was dissolved, they walked away without getting any type of.
That's correct.
Reimbursement or compensation? If that's what I'm hearing you say.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I have a question for Dr. Whitaker, or to piggyback off the RFP, minority development to ensure, when you develop a RFP and we send it out, there's a selection criteria of it, and you could pretty much demand that the developer meet a certain percentage of minority participation in the selection criteria. If they don't, if they submit their, their RFP, if they submit their proposal and it doesn't meet our selection criteria, just bypass it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think it needs to go through legal counsel to advise on that process to make sure that we're not exposing ourselves to potential.
And they're always involved in any of the deals, any other projects, any other proposals. We don't do, like y'all, anything without their advice.
Right. Well, I don't know if there's been an intentional effort to put forth a minority contracting program. That's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm speaking of specifically.
But the, the most recent one you see in the, this casino contract.
We don't have any control over that. That's not, that's not any type of city control making sure that those particular goals are met. There's, there's no control in that.
Yeah, I mean, all of us, it's, it's, it's an agreement that you enter into.
Legal agreement.
And, and you say, when you, you, you make it legalize, you agree.
Yeah, there's no penalty attached to it.
Right, well, well, that's why they got lawyers.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
And that's why nothing's guaranteed.
I'm not trying to debate that, because I know what you're talking about is not what I'm speaking to. I'm saying there needs to be some type of policy that is in place, and just because you have stuff in a contract does not necessarily mean that it will have any type of ramification.
There's a lot of pieces to that.
Yes, so that's, those were, because, and the other issue regarding what we would like to see, I think I saw from one of our neighboring cities, a process that was pretty open. and that was the development of the Military Circle site. Those developers came and presented right in the open. I think there were three of them. Those type of processes, I think, gives more transparency. The community gets to see what's going on. When we start doing unsolicited and, you know, groups popping up without going through a more open process, then I think that just raises more questions to be scrutinized. But I think that's, as far as what you say, what we would like to see, openness and equity and, and outcomes, and that's something that has been lacking significantly in this city.
Councilman Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, EDA Chair Smith. I, I, I think as a person who's been on both sides of development, actually been in construction, drove, on draw-up blueprints, and actually worked in the construction area as well, you know, I have a different level of love of what goes on in this city, and, you know, being a lifelong resident here. You know, you hear the same scenarios for so long, you know. We have fifty percent of our land owned by the government, fifty percent is owned by, you know, the, the city or whatnot, but we just don't have that luxury to make mistakes. And, and when I say that, I, I think most of our community may ask why certain projects are in their neighborhood, or why certain projects aren't in our city, you know. So when we look at this property, you know, and you guys are here because you guys are looking for progression, I'm looking for progression as well. We, we have to make sure that we're doing this the right way, and, and, but also making progress. So, what I, what I say is, I, I think that we do have some, some type of unsolicited bid. We do have some people that's interested in what we can develop here, what they can develop here on our waterfront. And I, I don't think it was brought to council, it was pretty much overseen by our city manager. So, the next step could be her disclosing what we could do. I, I think you guys just here coincidentally, but we could, you could disclose what is in this unsolicited bid, so we can see, is this something that we are looking forward to putting in our city? But for the most part, you gotta have a vision. We don't have the luxury to make mistakes, we just really don't, you know. So, this is a small business capital, it could be by default, or be, or it could be because we, you know, make a left turn here and there, you know, with development. So, we, we really gotta make sure that, you know, we are, we are taking a level of care with this. So, I think the next step is really to see what we could disclose with this bid.
Let me be clear, the unsolicited proposal that was submitted is no longer.
Gotcha, okay.
So, that, that one's done, it's, a decision has been made. The only thing that could come from that is if someone submits another unsolicited bid, and then that depends on the city council in terms of what direction you want to take.
So I would say with anything, unsolicited, RFP, whatnot, we just want to make sure that we're moving forward, just like you guys. That's my idea, that's my take on it. I know Dr. Whitaker is saying a presentation that the Norfolk City has, their department went through, but for the most part, any progression is, is what I'm, I'm looking forward to.
Councilman Moody, and then Vice Mayor Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with my colleagues about the, the openness of, of any deals or proposals. The Military Circle thing is a, a good example. The other half of that is, when this body rejects a proposal from a developer, that should be sunshine too. I can think of a couple of projects this year that have been rejected and, by four no votes, and no reason was given for rejecting the proposal. So, I, I think that's a two-way street when we talk about sunshine. Sun, sun should shine on both ends of the deal. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes.
Just to piggyback off of what Councilman Moody said, I know at least for me, whatever I unvoted no to, I said beforehand, to go back to what you were saying earlier. It's not a debate, dude, why you always debating something? I know what I did.
I'd like to set the facts straight.
It ain't the facts, though.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, please, please proceed, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, because he was rude and to argue while I was talking, and I didn't do him like that. So do we have any type of unsolicited bids right now?
No.
Okay, thank you.
But, oh, you're trying to, but, but, you know Sir, you have the floor. Okay, thank you. But the way that works, there's always the possibility of a resubmission by the same group, or, and the, the way, the way the unsolicited proposals, to my knowledge, work, and y'all, y'all can help me, but ultimately, it has to come public.
That's correct.
It may be offered upfront to get the feel, or to get some preliminaries, to get an agreement, but ultimately, it's gotta be public.
Correct.
And there's opportunities for other bidders to bid.
Correct.
Right.
But, but to your point, though, so, so when we look at RFPs, unsolicited bids, I'm looking for people who have an interest in being here in Portsmouth. I'm just not looking at someone that just want to come here to make a couple bucks, or make some dollars. We're looking at people who want to be here, want to put a good project here, and have something here that our citizens can enjoy. That's what I'm looking forward to. So like, once again, we, we sit here and we look for companies who don't have a vested interest, and once we, we put contracts in place, and we have budgets, and the price tag go up even higher. So my thing is, we want people who, who care about being here in Portsmouth, and can put a quality project here to help serve our citizens. That's what I'm looking for.
That, that's, if I may
You have the floor, sir.
If I may, that's exactly why my, my suggestion is for council to identify the most blighted, most needy portions of the city that need development, and send out a request for proposal for that particular parcel. Just one at a time, one at a time. We, we weren't totally focusing on the waterfront property, that just seemed the, the property that got the most discussion, but we would like to participate in any development, as an economic development, though we'd like to participate in any development. We just need to know what needs to be, be developed, and who could do it for the best, at the best price for Portsmouth, without costing the city anything.
I appreciate you, sir. Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Well, to my colleagues, let's not try to always make things nefarious. If I say no, that's to the public, and there's nothing nefarious about that. I would have my reasons, just like you would have your reasons if you voted yes. So how do we get something nefarious in a yes or a no vote that we have to take before the full credit and spectrum of the city? Let's not do that. Let's not always point to nefariousness among our colleagues. That's low rent, and, and it, and it's just not good for a city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One, one of the things that I would like to recommend, perhaps, to my colleagues and to the board, you know, I have found it, this is just my experience, I have found it to be beneficial when we spend quality time together. When you talk about a vision, when you talk about a shared vision, and how we all wish to proceed forward, and some of the areas of concern that we have demonstrated here today, I advocate, and I think to my colleague, mentioned, Councilwoman Lucas Burke, it would be in our best interest to perhaps have a retreat and sit down. And that way, we could cover a lot of ground, and I think it would be productive in a couple of ways. We could gain, as council, gain a lot of information on behalf of what you all are doing, and more importantly, we could articulate our vision for you all to have a clear understanding, which I think ultimately brings us to a better place. All of those things, whether it's an unsolicited proposal, is still based on the state code, it has to be public. That's the state code, and we do follow the state code. And so, the reality is, those things that matter to us as a council, we can articulate those things in a retreat environment, and then come away with some clear directives that we can all move forward together. And I think that's increasingly more beneficial than, than not. We could, we could get a lot done, but that would be under your agreement and under council's agreement, if, if that pleases everyone. Well, I would venture to say, and confidently say, we would be on board. We would.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just in the past times, you can't take me to the jungle for a retreat.
I'm not gonna take, no, no.
You're gonna take me to the city or nice something.
Right here, Mr. Battle.
I'm not going to the jungle.
We, we, we're going to stay right here. I didn't say a two-day, I mean a one-day, right here in the city of Portsmouth.
I'm all for it, but you just can't take me to the jungle.
I, I promise, sir.
You don't hunt, you don't hunt anymore, right?
But we, we can discuss that as a council, but I just think that that would be very helpful, and it would, it would clear up a lot of things that perhaps, I know I don't know everything, and there's a lot to learn, and we rely on you all for certain things, and you certainly rely on us for giving you direction.
Absolutely.
So with that, if, if all heads are clear, is there, are there any other questions?
I don't know whether that'll ever happen, that all heads are clear.
For this second. Can I just ask, y'all, and anyone else? Yeah, anybody have anything you want to say? Okay, y'all, we all good? Okay? But I want to thank you all seriously for the work that you do. We appreciate that. We know it's a volunteer opportunity, but we could not get the things done in our city if it were not for volunteers like you. And so, we're grateful to have you, and I speak on behalf of, of the city council, and we look forward to continuing, continued success with you as we go forward. Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Journey. Madam City Manager?
Yes, the first presentation tonight is the Capital Improvement Program. Will be presented by Budget Officer Mr. Trey Burke.
Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, and members of city council. Tonight I will review the FY 2023 through 2027 capital program, its evaluation criteria, debt policies, and considerations for new projects, including projects being considered for infrastructure bill funding. The Capital Improvement Program, known as the CIP, is a five-year plan that addresses procurement and construction of capital assets, as well as ongoing maintenance of city infrastructure. The CIP's first year is the only appropriated year. Its subsequent years provide a plan for addressing future infrastructure needs with projected expenses and resources. Capital projects may take more than one year fiscal year, and as such, the funding is authorized by project, and the project is closed on completion. Governments utilize capital improvement plans to identify and present future needs requiring capital infrastructure. A list of projects planned for the city with corresponding financing resources is constructed, excuse me, is created. CIP is programmed into nine specific program areas that encompass every component of the Capital Improvement Program. The program areas are consistent with standard Government Finance Officer Association practices, and are similar to cities and counties throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. There are three capital project funds. The General CIP Fund builds parks, streets, schools, and makes large capital purchases, such as vehicles and telecommunications infrastructure. The Public Utility Enterprise CIP installs and maintains water sewer infrastructure, while the Parking Authority Enterprise CIP builds and maintains parking facilities. Each project is, capital planning is critical to water, sewer, transportation, sanitation, and other essential public services. It is also an important component of a community's economic development program and strategic plan. The CIP development team reviewed and examined existing and future, excuse me, existing and future capital projects. Each project is evaluated on the following criteria: health and safety, mandates, consistency with comprehensive plan, quality of service, community or environmental impact, citizen impact, project readiness, alternative funding sources operating, excuse me, operating budget impact, and project linkage. The proposed fiscal year 2023 capital program reflects the city's health, safety, and welfare needs. While the proposed fiscal year 2023 capital program will be appropriated on council adoption, future years are not appropriated, and for planning purposes only. Future years may change as the needs of the city change. The total capital program proposal includes water, sewer, drainage, and street improvements, including stormwater management, education, industrial and economic development, leisure services, municipal facilities, the parking authority, and fleet management, excuse me, fleet replacement. Note that a previous version of this table included seventeen million dollars of ARPA funding. Those products are not included in this presentation for clarity, and they will be discussed and appropriated outside of the budget process. The one-year capital program includes status quo projects to main health, safety, welfare of the city, and will total fifty-six point eight million dollars. It is funded by a mix of operating budget transfers and bonds, where debt service reflects the projected lifestyle of the asset up to twenty years. A discussion of projects by CIP category will follow on the next slides. However, the General Fund CIP is funded with ten point five million dollars of bonds, twelve point three million dollars of fund, fund balance transfer, and ten thou, excuse me, one hundred thousand dollars of other funding. The fund, excuse me, the Utility Fund CIP is funded with thirty million dollars of revenue bonds and four million dollars of cash transfer. These next slides will serve as a brief review of projects with additional funding in fiscal year 2023. If anyone has any questions, feel free to stop.
Yes, yes, can you repeat, I'm so sorry.
Councilman, Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Can you repeat the sources of the capital improvement project funding you just mentioned? I think you said
It is
You said, you said ten point five million in bonds? Is that what, is that at the bottom page, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
The sources, okay.
So the ten point five you'll see in that bottom left?
Okay.
And then, the twelve point three is a combination of the transfer from general fund?
Okay.
And the transfer from stormwater fund?
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Sewer projects are as follows: sanitary sewer overflow elimination program, the sewer pump station improvements, suction well rehabilitation. These projects total twenty-three point five million dollars. Water projects include Lake Kahoon and Sledge Lagoon pipelines, low-pressure transmission mains, meter replacement, excuse me, meter replacement program, the replacement of water plant equipment, SCADA upgrades, and waterworks. These total ten point three million dollars. Drainage and street improvements include roadway projects and stormwater projects. Roadway projects tend to have some level of state money involved, but are primarily funded by the general fund. Stormwater projects are primarily funded with local stormwater fees. Projects include ADA compliance curb cuts, bridge repairs, stormwater infrastructure renewal and replacement, stormwater retrofits, traffic inventory, traffic signal improvements, the permit compliance and resiliency, the Frederick Boulevard turn lane entrance into North Truxton, the LED street light upgrades, and neighborhood roadway and drainage. These projects total seven point four million. Staff is recommending that two point six million dollars be programmed in the various school improvements projects to replace the Churchland Academy roof and the Craddock Elementary roof. Economic and community development projects include city gateways, demolition of buildings, Crawford Street Roundabout, and resiliency planning. These projects total seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
Excuse me, sir, may I ask a question? On the Crawford Street Roundabout, it, wha, wha, what is proposed there, and when, when will that begin? Do you know?
As to specifics on when it begin, I can't necessarily tell you, however, that is improvements related to bringing the Willett Hall statue
Right.
to the roundabout and getting that installed properly and correctly.
Okay, that's fair.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, so, on the Crawford Roundabout, do we still, are we still getting the grant from, I think, from Breeden?
It is not programmed in this budget, however, if that is, you know, still available and an option, we will absolutely go after that before we spend any city money that could go, could be defrayed by that grant. But I'm not, it's not in the budget, no, sir.
Well, we, we need to find out, that, that was Well, we we need to find out that that was pretty substantial grant.
Madam City Manager?
Yes, I'm looking to see if anyone in the audience knows, but I think if I'm not mistaken, that has already been received. Nobody seems to know, so we'll find out. We'll do a follow-up.
The reason why I ask because it was specific for the placement of something in the roundabout. At that time, it was going to be a sale, but that's obviously that's changed. But I believe, as I recall, that that grant was going to still be offered to the city by Breeden.
I know that that was something that LaVore's Pace worked on and I thought that the final agreement had been determined, but I can definitely do a report back on that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, man. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
So where does this fall on page six? Where you had the breakdown, where does the citywide development appear?
The industrial and economic development.
Okay, so that's tied, okay, all right.
Yes, sir. If you follow that to the right column, you'll see that it reconciles the 766,000.
Right, okay. I see the, I see the 516.
Continue all the way to the right.
That's the total, okay, I got you. Thanks.
The Leisure Services CIP includes parks, recreation centers and playgrounds. Projects, specific projects are city park improvements, dog park improvements, citywide sign replacement and the Prentice Park improvements. The next two slides are municipal facilities, just a heads up that they, the both slides totaled $9.5 million. A hazmat program, pavilion repairs, DSS building security, the E911 server replacement, fire station concrete repairs, citywide facility upgrades, municipal access control, municipal audio video, municipal security cameras, evaluation for vehicle services building, the public safety facilities upgrades, the repair of seawall, the new north north inlet phase of the seawall, the security system upgrade, the sportsplex building repairs and the water treatment plant building assessment repairs. The Parking Authority CIP includes $100,000 for facility repairs. The fleet replacement CIP budget includes $2 million. Just a quick review of debt policies for a minute. The city has adopted, excuse me, the city has adopted debt policies to guide and.
Hold on, Mr. Burke, we have Dr. Whitaker ask a question, sir.
On municipal facilities, continue page 14.
Yes, sir.
When you have evaluation for vehicle services building, what is what is that?
I would defer to James right on that one. The evaluation of vehicle services building? My mistake, I called the wrong person.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. So we're currently replacing the Public Works Operations Building you approved after ARPA funding. As part of the city manager's task to staff, we're looking at the overall operation city, operations center to do a master plan and part of that involves looking at that vehicle services building to see if it's compatible with the future intended use long term.
So so when you said part of that is looking at, are you saying that this is just some type of, you're contracted with someone to determine if that particular need is necessary?
It's mostly staff work. It's mostly staff work. There will be some that we need to do as far as geotechnical, looking at the environmental components that are out there. We have some underground tanks out there to determine how to close them properly, dispose of them moving forward. So it's a, it's a pretty much a holistic look at what needs to happen to that site.
So this is, this isn't actually any shovel in the ground type work. This is more like it's evaluating whether it's needed or.
Correct, sir, to see what you have, what it can be and then to chart the best path forward.
So why is, why is it a million dollars if it's the staff that's doing it?
What is the the amount? I know what the study is about, but the amount, so I have to defer.
Deputy City Manager?
It's not so much as, okay, good evening, council. Dr. Whitaker, it's just the overall, it was just money that we we actually programmed there to look at overall the operations facility. Again, we have the building that we're replacing for the operations for Public Works. We have some flooding issues there. We have some, some other issues with the other building. It's just the overall. It's no shovel to the ground like you mentioned. And it will probably, I'm sure it will come under a million dollars, but we programmed because we don't know what we're going to be dealing with out there.
So where does the ARPA funds fall in to place with this?
ARPA funds was the 2.8 million.
Okay.
And so what we did and just again, we have a second allocation coming. If there are some things that you all would like to see differently, we just wanted to make sure we programmed some money in the budget to cover those things in our general fund, well, in our CIP.
So is this more of a placeholder?
You can say that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Burke, you may continue.
The city has adopted debt policies to guide and inform the amount of debt we can take on, including a ratio of outstanding debt and a debt service to revenue ratio. Our debt policies state that our outstanding tax-supported debt should not exceed 4% of total assessed non-exemptial property values. In fiscal year 2023, we project this ratio to be 4.2%, assuming no additional tax-supported debt is obligated in 2023. This is above our policy limit. Note that this slide is slightly different than what we showed last, last, last presentation in that we include proposed debt in future years, but also know that, excuse me, know that future debt issuances require council approval and that it happens outside of the budget process.
Questions?
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, can you go back to page 16? The city garage fleet, 2 million, what is, what is that?
So as time goes on, vehicles break down. And what the fleet replacement is, is you take the most poorly, most out of shape vehicles, you take them out, you decommission them essentially, and the $2 million replaces them with new vehicles. So that includes any kind of public safety vehicle.
Right.
Ambulances and then also just ready, regular city fleet vehicles such as, you know, public works. It does not include public utilities. They pay for their separately.
Okay.
But.
So so again, do we, do we know that that's going to be 2 million or is that again a sort of a placeholder there?
We, at one point, we were budgeting $2 million. It was supposed to be every year to replace some vehicle fleet. We had really gone behind in fleet replacement. So ARPA dollars you did allocate for $2 million, but that just doesn't even scratch the surface of the vehicles we need to replace for our fleet. So we programmed this into the budget to cover additional vehicles that will come along that we need to purchase.
So so are we purchasing those vehicles during this fiscal year? Are we, is the 2 million going to actually be used to do that? Or like I said, is it a sort of a placeholder for 2 million?
We're using 2 million. We're placing orders for those vehicles.
Okay, so altogether it's 4 million when you include the ARPA?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my question is to Ms. Terry as well. Does that figure include any school buses?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. And the reason why I ask that because I know the state has money for school bus replacement, I think as much as a million dollars that the school system gets. Thank you.
Mr. Battle, I'm sorry, sir.
While we're doing placeholders, have the, has the department submitted a request for vehicles?
So vehicles aren't a placeholder. Vehicles are for replacement vehicles that they, I receive a list from every department of all the vehicles and equipment that they need. And so the list exceeds 2 million on top of the additional 2 million for ARPA. So those funds are what we program in the budget every year to cover those costs. Several, for a few years, we weren't able to program those dollars or even buy city vehicles or upgrade the vehicles that we have. So we just wanted to make sure that we have those dollars allocated for that vehicle or fleet replacement this year, 2023. But yes, sir, I do have a list from every department for vehicles that are needed and need to be replaced.
Council, Councilman Whitaker, Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Mr. Terry, I'm just curious, as we look at the budget, we're talking about the use of vehicles and replacing them. Have we explored the use of virtual instead of, for example, when when you have permits and you have to get permits approved? A lot of these cities are going to not actually have a person drive a city vehicle to do an inspection, but they're doing it virtually. Have we explored that at all for Portsmouth?
So, Dr. Whitaker, that's a great question. I won't speak to permits per se because I know we have some things that we're looking at technology-wise with the permitting system. Have we explored that? I I will allow my colleague to respond, but we are looking for a permitting system upgrade.
Good evening, members of council, Dr. Whitaker. The, once we got hit with the COVID shutdown back in March of 2020, we began to explore, you know, being much more virtual in terms of all things permitting and inspections. The issue of inspections is something some localities, for example, I know Norfolk went fairly heavily into virtual inspections. There's some drawbacks that people have found, you know, going through that with some things they can't see virtually. So that is still an item that is under, under exploration. I think that is something staff's definitely interested in looking at and pursuing, but at this time it has not been determined that that's, at least from a 100% perspective, a way to, to approach all the inspections that are required.
Has there been any inquiry as to what the cost of that might would be?
No, that's one of the, one of the tasks we have going on for this year is we're looking at updating our entire permitting process, going to much more electronic permitting process, looking at cost savings for going virtual, what it would take to be virtual and how would you work with the contractors in order to, for example, go out there and videotape or use a phone or whatever to be able to show you the things you would normally look at during the course of an inspection. So that is under review, but we do not have a cost figure for that at this time.
Okay, and again, as we're looking at our budget considerations, do we have the skill set in place that would allow for that type of transfer or management of?
Yes, I mean, I think the skill set is there. It's the technology's not there at the present time.
Just that, just that we haven't accessed it?
Well, again, I think people have been looking at it. It was something new that people got into during the COVID situation and as more people were doing it, while there are a number of things that people liked about it, they were also discovering some things they, they weren't, they weren't 100% sure could be done for all inspections. So you end up with some sort of a blended version of virtual inspections and some physical inspections would always be required. So that has been looked at and it's continuing to be looked at.
Okay, I was just curious because as we look at these expenses and funds being set aside for vehicle fleet, I was just curious if that's been balanced against the virtual opportunities, but thank you.
Debt service is the yearly amount of money. Debt service is the yearly amount of money spent on repaying debt principal and interest. Our adopted debt policy sets a limit of 10% for the allocation of debt service payments to the general fund and schools revenue. As a point in time, we pay 9% of our school and general fund revenue on tax-supported debt service. While the policy allows for additional debt, that will add to the annual debt service payments, which will impact our ability to fund priorities in the future. Note that this slide is also slightly different in that it includes the proposed debt in future years. City staff is always reviewing projects for their ability to be funded with grant or other alternative funding sources to most efficiently use city tax revenue. While there has always been a level of state funding, this year represents a particular opportunity and challenge with a temporary influx of federal funding. While staff will ensure that each project is competitively written to maximize the likelihood it is funded, staff cannot guarantee funding of any of the projects and it cannot anticipate what projects or project areas are most likely to receive funding. Under consideration for infrastructure bill funding are the Prentice Avenue Water Transmission Main, Lake Mead Dam Rehabilitation, Lake Kahoon Dam Rehabilitation, Vacuum Sewer Replacement Rehabilitation, Craddock Fire Station, George Washington Highway Culvert Replacement, the High Street Innovation Corridor Completion, Public Safety Facility, Public Safety Communications Upgrades, Workforce Development Building, Elm, excuse me, Workforce Development, Elm Avenue, Victory Boulevard Pedestrian Improvements, Elm and Victory Roundabout, Harper Avenue Improvements and LED Street Light Upgrades.
A question, Mr. Terry.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
So on, on page 19, so are these, are these projects built into the CIP or not?
No, sir.
They're not. And on page 17 and 18, what, what is the difference between this 4% policy? I know we talked about a 10% policy. What is the 4% policy?
The 4% policy is the amount of debt that you, that the city can have, outstanding debt principal that the city can have against its assessed property values. So you take 4% of the citywide assessment and that's the maximum amount of debt that you can have.
And. And you're saying that for fiscal year 2023, that if we do what, it will go over the 4%? For, on page 17. So you're saying for fiscal year 2023, if the city does what, it will go over that 4% debt?
The. The policies, maybe we could probably better express this, although the, the, the policy does not include the pension obligation bonds. However, staff has always felt, was always disagree with that a little bit. So we included it here so that it was clear that if you were to take all of it together, then we are over our debt policy.
Okay, so, okay, so that, that's not, that's not really presenting an accurate picture for council to consider because what this looks like is, because what you just said is that the pension debt is not included in the 4% calculation. Is that, is that what?
Hold on, if I could, if I could ask Madam City Manager to add to the discussion, please.
I'm actually going to turn it over to the Chief Financial Officer, Deputy City Manager, who presented the report.
So currently, so when we talked about the 4% city policy, we talked about what the city has in debt. And if you all recall, when we met 101, we talked about if we just look at our, our actual debt, we were under the 4% policy. I think we had 3. some, 3.5. When you add pension obligation bonds, that took us up to 5.2. And recall, if you recall, we talked about how, how much more debt we could add. But that was on the 10% policy. We were showing you where we are now. And we actually talked about all debt is debt. So we didn't want to exclude pension obligation bonds because that's truly our debt.
But, but this is my issue. If our policy excludes it, you, you were saying that, I thought you just said that the 4% does not include pension.
That's not true.
That's my mistake. My mistake. I didn't intentionally misrepresent. I made a mistake.
Okay, okay, so are you, so are we in violation of our policy? Is that what you said?
Correct.
Okay.
We're at the 5.2%. That is. That is back to where we talked about our debt policy, and I gave a couple of presentations on where we stood, and then we had one-on-one sessions to discuss it. The 4% debt-supported, 4% policy, we have excluded, we have, we're over that policy.
Okay.
We have exceeded that policy because we include our pension obligation bonds, simply because that is the debt that the city has to pay. It is due. But what we always wanted to do is show you the difference because every locality doesn't carry pension obligation bonds. And if you recall, I even said Norfolk has now included pension, has had to go after pension obligation bonds for their retirement system. So it's just giving you an indication of saying, without pension obligation bonds, this is where we are. With pension obligation bonds, that's where we are.
So, so which policy do we follow? The 4% or 10%?
That's a separate policy.
Okay.
That's, that's overall policy. The city council wrote the policy of, that is, the city's policy of 4%. We should not exceed the city policy of 4%, however, we have, when you add in our pension obligation bonds, because it's still our debt.
Okay. So which, which policy is the 10%?
10% is on the next page.
Right. Right. So my, my question is, if we're in violation of our policy at the 4%, then what does this 10% policy represent?
That, that is relative to what you have in revenue. Remember when we?
So just, what's the, what's your formula? What, what's the, just like you told us that on the 4%, it's the outstanding debt to citywide assess, I said, what's, what's the formula for this?
Your revenue for general fund.
And schools.
And schools. That is part of, that's the start of your equation. And then you look at how much debt you have actually, your debt service, what you actually pay in debt payments.
Your house payment.
I'm sorry?
That's the house payment you were talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. And so that's where this, this is this debt policy. You're looking at different numbers. So basically, it's saying you just have to have enough revenue to cover your debt. Again, this is not debt, this does not look at revenue from rates. Remember, we talked about that, that you have a policy that you address when you're dealing with utilities, because that's revenue bonds you can get from different rates. If you have money coming in, then it does not, you have to make sure you have enough dollars or revenue coming in not to exceed. So you have a couple of things going on and, but this debt policy is definitely to show how much revenue you have and to ensure that you have, don't go over your, what you can put out in payments.
So, so if we, if we were to go out and get more debt, as long as it's under this 10% policy supporting that the city could handle that payment, then where would that put us in relation to this 4% policy?
So remember, we talked with the 4% policy.
So, so I'm saying, so?
So we looked at overall, we talked about $40 million. If you did a one-time $40 million payment, that would do, be a two, I'm sorry, a one-time $40 million bond sale, that would actually be a 2 million additional dollars that you would add to your debt service payment.
Right.
Could the city handle that? Yes. Should the city have to do that? Of course, we would like to use cash versus what we have to go after bonds. But if you're asking, what's our wiggle room, or how much can we do? We can do $40 million one-time with a $2 million payment, and we actually have debt as we are paying off over a 20-year period.
Right. Okay. And so this 4% wouldn't limit us?
Any debt you take out would be 4%. I'm, I'm sorry. Any debt you take would limit you.
No, I meant as far as the policy is concerned, since we're already over it.
Yeah, it's, it's going to limit you. You're going to, you're already over.
Okay.
City Manager?
Yes, I just wanted to weigh in to say it's up to council to determine which one of those policies you want to stick to. The 4%, we've been over that ever since we issued pension bonds.
Okay.
So the question is, you know, do you limit yourself with that because you know that that was something extraordinary?
Okay.
And as long as we are within the 10%, then that's a policy that you've set, and that's a policy that we can adhere to.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but I also just want to remind every of council that this affects your bond rating. When you go after bonds and they look at your debt policy, it affects how much you can borrow, your interest rate, and if you're a risk at borrowing. So the $40 million one-time is where I said, hey, if we do that one-time, we're comfortable because we have payments that we're making every year to be able to pay off as we go along. But that's just to give you an idea of where we are.
Right.
But we don't want to continue to exceed our own policy because it looks bad at a bond rating agency, and it reduces our scores.
Well, it's been bad since you took out the pension, and we've been getting?
I didn't take out a pension.
No.
But it was necessary. I would say it was necessary.
Not personal.
Absolutely.
So, so it's been like that for years, and we've still had good bond ratings?
Right. And fortunately, you know, we have been great fiscal stewards of our dollars, and we have not run out to buy something that was unnecessary. They see our progress. They watch our progress, and they determine if we are a flight risk, I should say, or if we are fiscally responsible to be able to handle this debt. And we have great things coming in Portsmouth, which gives us that leg up to be able to do these things, knowing that revenue streams will be coming in soon.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Terry.
You're welcome.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Well, I think Dr. Whitaker touched base on that. My, my question was if, if we've exceeded the 4% ever since the pension bonds were issued, obviously, the, the bond-rated agencies have accepted that. Is that, have we, my, my question's to the CFO, Councilman. Have the bond-rated agencies accepted that? Have they cited that?
Yes, they've accepted, but they cited. So when they provide the ratings, they tell us that if your fund balance, if your fund balance goes low, which fortunately, we have a healthy fund balance that allows us to do some of these things because they know we have dollars reserved. But if we start eating at our fund balance or taking on debt that we cannot pay, it will definitely affect. So yes, to your question, they do review that. Yes, they give comments on what would decrease your rating. And yes, we are not at the AAA, but we are in good standing.
But they also look at the revenue stream?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. The manager's proposed status quo capital program reflects the health, safety, and welfare needs of the city. Staff will need consensus around any projects to include them in the budget, which is to be adopted on May 10th by City Council. The projects that have been stated as possible, possible priorities include the Skilled Trade Center, Churchland Elementary School, the K-8 School, Churchland High School, IC Norcom High School, and Manor High School Field Improvements, Recreation Complex Enhancements, Sportsplex Complex, New City Hall, the Public Safety Complex, Craddock Fire Station, a 250 inmate jail, and the County Street Parking Garage replacement. This presentation discussed the factors that impacted the fiscal year 2023 through 2027 capital improvement program and the factors which affected its, excuse me, and the factors which affected its development. I'll be glad to answer any additional questions you have at this time.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor. Then Councilman Moody.
Can we go to page 20, unauthorized and unfunded projects? So do we have the amounts for each of these?
Yes, sir. We can provide that list.
Can we, can we, can we get that? How soon can, because that?
We have already provided.
Right.
We have provided that list, but we can turn it, I mean?
Do you have any, do you know how much the Churchland High School field, the Norcom field, the Manor field, how much those are?
Yes, we do. Let me see if I brought that in.
Those were provided on the one-on-ones, and then at a presentation we did previous to that. But we can definitely, I don't have it right here with me, but we, that's part of your one-on-one package.
Okay.
And one of the presentations we gave. But we can turn around and provide it again.
The reason I'm asking is because these are, these are projects that we could shift into the CIP, but we don't, at this point, we don't have the actual numbers in front of us.
I got a figure of that one if I can.
We have other people on the line. So once we get through that, you're welcome to speak, sir.
The IC Norcom turf field and fieldhouse is 5.2 million. The Churchland High School fieldhouse is 819,000. The Manor High School fieldhouse is 837, or you might as well say 838, 837.5.
Okay. And we have not received any proposal from the schools as far as the skilled trade center? What direction the school is going with that?
No, but when we inquired, when we met with them, and I asked the city engineer, James, to speak up if I misquote, when we asked them about the skilled trades facility, they indicated that it would cost about $80 million, and that's unfurnished.
Mm-hmm.
And then our city engineer did a rough estimate between 20 and 40 million if, if we were able to attach it as a wing to another school.
Okay.
So we, we have those amounts that are being considered. And of course, all of that depends on how big the facility is in terms of square footage.
And for the Churchland Elementary School replacement?
The Churchland, oh, that was. Let me make sure I have that. I want to say it was, do you have that number, James? I want to say it was 80 million as well, but I'm just making sure I'm not going off the top of my head. 80 million.
And now the K-8 school?
Now, that one, I don't recall a number for, oh, same.
Okay.
So they, they estimated both of those, all of those at the same.
Okay. And then on the other side, on the right column, just curious, do we have any of these figures?
Yes. We have all of them.
You have them now?
Let me just make sure. Yes.
If, if I could just interject, in the interest of time, if we could have you provide that information, because we have other council members that want to ask a question. We're already past the seven o'clock hour.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So if, if, if we could go ahead and just get that information provided as requested by Mr. Moody, then Councilwoman Lucas Burke, then Vice Mayor Barnes?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I didn't even realize the time.
It's okay, sir.
Can we discuss it more during the public hearing?
We certainly can.
All right.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my question is a quick one. The wards, water storage tanks, are they addressed in the CIP or out of ARPA funds?
ARPA.
ARPA funds. But that is on schedule?
I'm sorry?
That, that, that's underway as, as far as putting a bid out, whatever we have to do?
No, no, no. That's still on the list to be considered for ARPA funds.
Okay. So that's not a done deal?
That's correct. You guys have to determine which, how you want to allocate those funds.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Lucas Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Trey Burke, for the presentation. Under the unauthorized, unfunded projects, I know we're going to talk more about that, but is any school funding taken into consideration on this? Do they pay anything towards any of these capital improvement?
At this point, that has not been determined. I know in one of the meetings we had, there was some discussion about potentially using funds that instead of re-appropriating them, setting them aside for capital projects, but that was just a discussion that we had. We haven't really firmed that up into an agreement. But that is a possibility.
Right. Okay. And then last question, under the municipal facilities, page 13, the pavilion repairs, and I know this is a question citizens are going to want to know, we just, you know, had the pavilion and all of the chairs and, you know, new masks put up, but what, what is this million fifty?
There was a court order, or there was a, a court order that stated that certain improvements needed to be made to the pavilion. These repairs that you see here are going, are the additional ones in terms of the artist quarters, I want to say there's, there's a variety of requirements that we are here to make in terms of improvements to the pavilion.
But this doesn't put anything out of compliance with the court order?
No, no, no. We're, we're in compliance.
Great. Thank you.
So the full million is court ordered?
It's those improvements that we need to make as a result of that agreement that we had, and so we're just going down the list of those things as they come up because it's our responsibility to address them.
And, and all of that court order equals a million fifty?
No, it's more than that.
Oh, okay.
Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
So we were sued by?
That's my understanding when I came on board, that there was a lawsuit that was filed due to inability to perform certain shows and the condition of the facility and so forth.
Was that related to the roof as well?
I'm sorry?
Is that related to the, the canopy as well?
Yes. That was included in there also.
I have two, two questions for the interest of time. I'm only going to ask those two. For the K-8 school, is that, is that an addition? Is that the replacement for a middle school? Or are they trying to do both?
I think they're trying to do both.
Okay.
Because it says K through 8, so that to mean kindergarten through 8th grade.
So that's what they want instead of the middle school?
That's correct.
And as far as the Sportsplex Complex, I know originally, we did get a presentation, but I don't think we, and I could be wrong, but I don't think we got a new presentation with, when we asked to include like the additional goals on the additional soccer fields and things like the original, I mean, like Virginia Beach and things of that nature.
We did. We did a rendering, we did a work session that showed potential renderings of a new Sportsplex that included a number of different amenities.
Okay. What was the cost of that? I mean, you can get back to it.
Yeah. We can continue this discussion under the public hearing because we're going to be talking about CIP there.
Absolutely. And the other item, I know that we were supposed to discuss proposed fee schedule?
Yes.
Is that something we can continue until the next meeting? Or do we want to continue? How do we want to move forward with that?
I think we can continue at the next meeting because the next work session is strictly budget. So anything that we do not cover tonight, that will be the only items on work sessions for that May 10th meeting.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
So, Miss Mayor, and piggyback on your question, the fee schedule, that doesn't have anything to do with the rates and levies discussion that's on the agenda?
It does.
So could, could it be discussed then?
It can.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. And when is that going to be discussed?
Today.
Tonight?
Seven o'clock.
Okay, very good. We can add that. That's fine. And, and we did get the report back, and so are there any city liaison reports, city council liaison reports at this time? Seeing none, we will now adjourn the public work session, and we will convene the regular city council meeting at seven, let's go to the seven, 7:10. Is that okay with everybody? Three minutes, or you need five? How about 7:12? Will we convene five minutes? If everybody would take five minutes to get themselves together, we'll join the meeting. This meeting is adjourned.